Everyone. Okay, now this is gonna be good. All right. Welcome to the regular Tuesday, March 25th meeting of the Ojai City Council. Roll call, please. Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Meng.
Here.
And participating remotely, Councilmember Rule.
Here.
We heard you. Thank you.
Mr. Montgomery, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely, Mayor. Welcome, community. Please rise as you are able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Meng?
Aye.
Okay. And now, presentation first. Outgoing Police Chief Trina Newman to be honored for her term of service and promotion to Commander of West County Patrol. You'll have to read this, because I can't read that. Thank you.
Okay, it says, "Trina Newman, Ojai Chief of Police, 2023 to 2025. In appreciation of unwavering service and dedication to the city of Ojai and its residents."
Oh, thank you so much. Wow, we're so sad to lose you and everybody's so happy to get you in our county. What do we need to do? Pictures? What's happening here?
Well, next we'll have our county representative Sheriff Freihoff would like to say a few words.
Come on, Rachel.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, both present and remote. Obviously, Trina continues a very good tradition that we have here in having the best of the best come serve the Ojai Valley. It's no mistake that she's now been promoted to Commander and she's going to take on a whole lot more responsibility in doing so. I know when I came up and visited her a couple of months ago and I let her know that this was going to be happening and she was she had such a big smile on her face before I told her that she was getting promoted because it's such a wonderful place to work. And I think in your career, certainly for me, when I look back at my 35 years, the three years that I spent in Ojai were just wonderful. The community here is nothing like anywhere else on the planet. Super engaged, a lot of fun to work in. It's the most beautiful city in the county. It really is stunning. I loved being up here and I live on the east end of Simi, so for me it was an hour and a half drive each way every day to commute here, but I did it because I love it here. And so, I've now selected a couple of people to interview for your chief job, which your city manager has selected, which I will introduce here shortly, but a long line of people getting promoted. Obviously, I was the chief here in 2017 to 2020. Jose Rivera was your chief from 2020 to 2023, when I promoted him to Assistant Sheriff. And then now, Trina's been promoted to Commander and I just want to thank her for all her efforts here in the Ojai community, what she has done here for you all. There were some pretty interesting times that were occurring here during a lot of protests and I think she handled it with such grace and professionalism that just made me very proud, certainly the Sheriff's Office very proud. And I was really excited to promote her to have to take on a little more responsibility, a lot more responsibility, in this next role as Commander. So, thank you all very much and congratulations, Trina.
I might recommend, we have a bunch of people in khaki and green here and it'd be really cool if we could get a big giant group shot.
One team.
Maybe here, yeah.
Yes.
All right, now Steve jump up front. Trina, come over here. All right. We got blade, 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 blade. There we go. All right, now Mrs. Chief, wait, wait, wait. Mrs. Chief was gonna take a picture.
Welcome.
And I'll say a few words back in one minute.
What's that? Right now. Please, Chief.
Well, good evening once again and it's my honor and privilege to introduce you to your new police chief, Steve Jenkins. You know, one of the things we talk about with contract cities, Ojai being one of our five contracts that we have with the Sheriff's Office, is the caliber of employee that you get and the level of experience that they bring when they come to Ojai. Should you have your own police department, they're very limited on the experience that they can build in a city that doesn't have all the resources the Sheriff's Office does. So you get really the benefit of somebody with 20 25 years of experience. His last couple of assignments, he was overseeing our Court Services Bureau, so catering to 40 something elected officials, all the judges there, all the staff there, 100 plus employees, a much larger operation as far as staffing level goes and not without its own issues. You like to call it, what was it?
The House of Conflict.
The House of Conflict. So, the House of Conflict, as it is known, is where he's been for the last couple of years as well. And so, prior to that, he was the investigative captain in Thousand Oaks, running the entire Investigations Bureau, and then he was Watch Commander before that and he's got a fairly lengthy resume that I'm sure he's happy to discuss. It's any time with all of you about what he's been able to accomplish in his 25 years with the organization. So, I'm really proud for Steve to be your chief. He knows what the city means to me. He knows this is a very special place. I was a deputy here in the early 90s, came back as your chief in 2017. I just love the Ojai Valley. And I wouldn't give you anybody other than the people that I really have the utmost admiration for to come and serve this community because I expect a lot out of them. I expect a lot out of all my employees, but a lot more out of those that are in Ojai. Steve, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, yeah. First off, did everyone catch that I have big shoes to fill? Sheriff, Assistant Sheriff, and now Commander, but... So, I do want to say I'm so honored, seriously. Ojai is near and dear to my heart and I'll explain that at another meeting when I do a longer introduction, but just know that I know the values of Ojai. I'm now uphold those. I'm going to build those relationships with the public. People are the most important part of our whole system, right? And so I'm a public servant. So, to the community, I'm here to serve you, right? Support you, protect you, and all that, so... But I do want to lastly say thank you to the sheriff, thank you city manager, great opportunity, but also my lovely wife, Marnie Jenkins is here. I just want to thank her for being such a support. Without her, I wouldn't be even close to where I'm at, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And we have one more presentation to Chief Parker, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll switch gears in our presentation now. We'll invite the mayor back up and we're lucky to have two chiefs outgoing. We'll switch gears from Sheriff's Office to Fire Department.
To Barry Parker, Ventura County Fire Department Division Chief for the City of Ojai, 2022, 2025. In appreciation of unwavering service and dedication to the city of Ojai and its residents. Thank you.
Take a moment as well. Mayor, Council, Community Members, Dustin Gardner, your county fire chief. I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging Barry and his service up here. Like the sheriff said, we only send our best and our brightest and our aspiring officers to cities like, you know, Ojai, Camarillo, Thousand Oaks, cities that they need somebody that engages with the community, somebody that understands the community, and somebody that represents the city of Ojai like their city fire department. And that's what Barry did. I'm proud of him. I'm proud to announce that he's leaving here and we've promoted him to our executive staff as an Assistant Fire Chief in charge of all of our support services. So, our annex, our fleet, our IT, everything that surrounds all of our fire stations, Barry now has. So, we watched him up here and how he did with the city of Ojai, how he did with all of you and the leadership skills you helped him build. So, Ojai, thank you. The community members of Ojai, thank you. It's been, it's an honor to see this and have you recognize him. I wish Nick could be here. I know he introduced himself, he said a couple of meetings ago. And just like Barry, Nick will fill big shoes. He's at a, he's in the National Incident Command Team meeting right now. So, if you didn't know that, like Barry, Nick, they're both on Type 1 Incident Management Teams. So, the biggest disasters in the nation, they're part of a small group of elite leaders that go and take care of those disasters. And we're lucky because we keep supporting them and bringing them up so that when we have disasters in Ventura County, which you all know we're no strangers to, we get to draw off all of their experience from going all around the nation. So, Nick is out with his federal team right now, which, sure, you all know there's a lot of turmoil in the federal world right now. So, as far as those are going, we're glad to have Nick there in his leadership and be up here with all of you. So, thank you. Thank you for the acknowledgement. I'm excited for Barry. I'm glad to be stealing him from you and bringing him into our executive staff. Yeah, thrilled with the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any commission reports? No word, Mayor. Okay, we'll go to Public Communications. I have a few cards here so far. These are for items not on the agenda for tonight. So, let me start with Hope and then Beau Redd and then Dr. Tim Williamson. Hope. Thank you.
Happy Spring.
Yes.
I've lived in Ojai for like almost 12 years now and I'm about to leave, go off to the Midwest and go explore eco-activism and here's a prayer for Ojai because it needs it. So much grass passing gas onward. Ritual at every breath. A lonesome sea of beauty pleading to death of another man's hypocrisy. Old rain borrowed by pain. Kim trails in the way. Insane chimes of earthly rage turn the page. Replug the seeds of well-being. You can't eat money. You can't eat money. Learn from your nightmares. Time cries at every door. I am a spore. Clothe me in a brighter sun. Tell no one we are all one. Within our hearts and our dreams are our trees living in an animate fever dream. Sorry, this is hard. Save Pine Mountain, please. Cavities crave as a bird lays another egg driven in a human-made plague. Composting. I would like to promote composting in the Ojai Valley. I think that all the local restaurants should start saving up their food and giving them to local farmers because a lot of farmers need that food for their livestock and it's all really good food and it's going to waste. It's producing actually methane emissions, which we know about. And as a city of peace, I think really diving into our food waste is something to look into as well as a space for artists to create together and be inspired. Does capitalism control climate change? We as people need to acknowledge environmental degradation as well as economic inequality. Preserving our biosphere is the least concern amongst the exploitive greed consumers weaving all human power against each other. The living world is a natural domain of the most restless and paradoxal part of the human spirit. Biological Edie Wilson said, hence nature is incomprehensible. Note, removing ourselves from 50% of the planet would save 85% of all Earth species. Gaia is resilient, but not infinitely so. Today's humanity being held by a strand of knowledge rooting towards animating ourselves at any given moment through nuclear chemical warfare and a genocide being being broadcasted across our screens. If you'd been living under a silicone rock under a bridge and have not had the opportunity to observe human behavior, look no further. The world
Thank you, Hope. Thank you. Let's not clap, though. I know there's really great words coming. Beau Reed, Dr. Tim Williamson, and then Mati Blacklock.
Beau Redd.
Beau Redd, thank you. Oh, sorry, I put an extra E in there. My mistake?
Thank you, folks. I guess I'm gonna do that. Is that all right? A little more comfortable? Well, you know, I've never addressed y'all, so I thought I might. Jared Beau Redd Bergman. I wish I came a little more prepared, but next time. And I just wanted to come see what it's all about and how we throw down here. So, a couple of points I want to make. Not here to complain about anything. You know, living's a hard thing to do. But what we need the most right now is community. There's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about the more localized it can be, the better it will be. And I know that it's really hard to make a living as an artist out here and it's, as a blue collar worker as well. And, you know, I think there should be a lot more support for those things, being an artistic community. As I was raised here my whole life and, you know, it was always hippies and rednecks and something in between. And, yeah, you know, with all the money that's coming into Ojai, I don't see why it's not lifting us up as well instead of just pushing us out. Because we're all leaving and there's not a lot of places to go. There is, I mean, but we gotta go. And that's unfortunate for a lot of, you know, some of the roots here who have held it down for a really long time and a lot of families. So, I'm, yeah. I'm here to throw down for my community as often as I can and I do as much as I can for the arts and supporting my friends who are artists and I spend my money locally. And, yeah, I know that our homelessness is where we see it. And I definitely am in favor of, you know, building Cobb homes for the homeless and that, you know, sustainable building. Also, a community garden would be... I think we could feed the people pretty easily, actually, because I have a lot of friends who are farmers who are really down to sow seeds and tend to land. And all that's needed is really the space to do that and the permission to do so. And I know so many plots of land in Ojai, whether it's right across from the park there when you're walking on the walkway or down across next to the Shell Gas Station or the, you know, in Miners Oaks, the car wash. There's plenty of places to do something like that and to build little concert, sustainable homes. And I know the worries in it, that, you know, what it could become, but I think you gotta start somewhere. Also, food waste for sure. That stuff is insane. And I know a lot of places like North Carolina that have places where you can buy food that's expired because it's not bad. Thank you very much, Beau Redd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ed. I know, it's very exciting, guys. Yes, please.
If I could add one thing about the food waste. So, there, there was a, Harrison sent an update just this week, actually, that they've been working toward a food waste composting. They already have one where you put your plastic bag in your yard waste bin. Put your, we use compostable bags in the yard waste bin. But now, they've, they've got it all set up and there is going to be, or there is community composting.
That's right, on Burnham.
Yep.
We're working on it. Dr. Tim Williamson, Mati Blacklock, and then Dr. Sudip Rao. Hello, sir.
Hello. I'm Dr. Tim Williamson. I'm here with my wife, Mary Ann Williamson, family nurse practitioner. We've provided medical service in this community for almost 45 years. We were one of the first families to build in Persimmon Hill and have lived there for over 40 years. My talk is really more of a question than a talk. In all of Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, the building of a cabin community, which I agree with, is it been in any of these locations near single-family residences?
I just want to caution you, that'll be our item number two. Would you like to talk to that item in a moment?
I didn't realize that that was
That's what it is, but I'll put you here. You'll kick it off? No, thank you. Thanks for being flexible. Nope, see you in a second. Dr. Sudip Rao and then Renee Roth and then Liz Otterbein. Oh, wait, I forgot. Mati Blacklock. Sorry, Mati. I believe it is. It is happening on the backside.
Mayor, I believe he's holding our special meeting agenda. There are
There's two agendas. The special meeting is the one in your hand, probably. The next one is the one. You're for number two. Okay. Liz? Okay, gotcha. And then now Sudip. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Andy.
Yes, thanks.
Councilmembers, Andrew Whitman, Councilmember Kim Meng, Councilmember Rachel Lang, and also Councilmember Leslie Rule, staff in the city. My name is Dr. Sudip Motipelli Rao. I'm not a doctor of medicine. I'm a doctor of engineering. I want to bring attention to both our city elected representatives as well as the city at large to wildfire preparedness and also insurance costs and the design and construction of homes that have been burnt. So, having experienced in the fires in Santa Rosa back in 2017 and also here in that same year in December, and there are fires in all over the places. What I learned by going to the town hall meeting that Assembly Member Steve Bennett and also Supervisor Matt Laverre initiated March 13th, that of course, many of you are aware that Ojai is going to see a 64% increase in insurance costs. 64%. I, I don't know if it's being covered very well in the, it's not been covered in the last two issues of the Ojai Valley news that came out after that meeting. Billions of dollars are being given out and the insurance companies are asking the Insurance Commissioner, Mr. Ricardo Lara, to approve even beyond the 20% that's been approved to go to 30%, etc. So, and the justification is that their models are showing, by the way, I'm not antagonistic about it. I just think that there's a way to design good homes the way the homes that have survived. So, we can learn a lot. Of course, there's a lot of lessons we've already learned about home hardening, but there are homes that are staying there standing. So, let's build houses that won't burn down. We do that for earthquake safety, retrofitting. We should be able to build houses that don't burn like matchsticks. And so, those houses should have a very low risk profile and the models for the insurance companies should reflect that and then offer credits. So, insurance costs should actually go down if the houses are built in a smart way. So, I'd like to request the city to help create a forum for us to discuss about it, maybe put it on an agenda, maybe invite the public to actually come in and participate. Are you okay with a 64% increase in your insurance costs? Yes, we have a unique geography, but I think it's worthwhile to actually talk about it as a society that do we just want to just go by the risk models of one insurance company industry or can we do better? And so, thank you very much.
I can respond to you to say, on December 8th, the Fire Safe Council had a community workshop at the Ojai Retreat. That 64% number comes from that. That's the increase that has occurred in Ojai. Not that it's going to occur, but has occurred. But there's two more panels in the works there. So, stay tuned. We're all wanting to learn more, but maybe the city will do something as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rao. Yes, thanks. Renee Roth and then Star Child.
Good evening, everybody. That was, that was a perfect introduction for what I would like to talk about. Good evening, staff, council, and the community. That was a perfect introduction for what I was going to talk about because, as you know, I have talked a lot about fire safety and fire preparedness and I understand that the new map that CalFire has just put out has determined those areas within Ojai that are in the high and the very high fire hazard area of Ojai. And I think that we've been down this road before with the Building Appeals Board and it was shifted over to the Building Appeals Board to try to determine what the best boundaries are, blah, blah, blah. Let's not go there. Let's not do that. Why don't we just adopt what Ventura County Fire has determined to be our very high and high fire hazard area map? And let's start doing something about it. I personally did register to have a home hardening assessment done on my house, on my... And I live in a condo and I live with other people in my village. And I was shocked. I was really shocked about the vegetation and I thought I knew a little bit about plants. I thought I knew what would grow in my area and what the right ones to put up against the wall and blah, blah. I was totally shocked by what they said and what needed to be removed and what needed to be trimmed back. There are stair ladders, fire ladders. There are vegetation that can get underneath the eaves that needed to be trimmed back. There are trees that needed to be trimmed back five feet. I had no idea. And so, I just want, I want everybody to really have that wake-up call. You know, we got a little bit of rain. That was really nice that, you know, what'd we have, two inches of rain maybe this last cycle? But I still think there's a lot of work to do and I really hope you take this new fire hazard map seriously. Grab it by storm. I know that was one of your priorities and I know Mr. Harvey is on it and he's ready to present what your next level of activities or tasks or whatever you call them are underneath it. So, anyway, I really appreciate you taking this on because I think it's so important and I have learned a lot. And I don't, I know we have the Fire Safe Council. I do not think we should contract for the Fire Safe Council. I think we need to bring staff in to understand and develop programs.
Thanks, Ms. Roth. Star Child?
Good evening. Today I want to talk about a subject that's been neglected for far too long, a casualty of the distractions that have consumed our city government. I refer to the Community Assistance Program, the Rental Assistance Program. If you read just one page of the nearly thousand pages in your packet tonight, make it page 21 of the written public comments where I posted excerpts from the 2021 where I posted excerpts from the 2021 Ojai City Housing Element. In these excerpts, the city promises to support financially the Rental Assistance Program through the help of Ojai. It tasked the office of the city manager to see that this promise is fulfilled. It says that this will happen annually. It's a promise made and a promise broken because since at least 2021, the city has not paid a penny to help of Ojai in support of the Rental Assistance Program. Preventing homelessness is a goal the city must see to fruition. How many in the tent town would be housed if they had the funds in their hour of need to prevent them from losing their housing? It's time to do, for this city to do, more of the things it's promised to do. Millions for legal fees, but not a penny for the Rental Assistance Program. There's no question the funds were authorized. It says it in the Housing Element. There's no question to whom they should be paid. It's the help of Ojai. There's no question who is responsible. It's the city manager. The only question I ask for the city manager tonight is WTF? Where's the funds?
Thanks, Star Child. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll switch over to our Zoom participants who are attending.
Hello?
Oh. Mayor, Councilmember Rule is speaking now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm not sure what the best way is to check in other than raise my hand and say hello. So if anyone can offer any guidance to that, I'm happy. I just wanted to say that the Rental Assistance to help of Ojai comes up about twice a year and we have not yet been able to implement it. So I'm hoping that we can either take it out or preferably go ahead and support it. Like I said, this has come up probably four times in my tenure about how we don't actually, we don't actually do what we say we're going to do on our Housing Element. And I can talk about that on the warrants because we have an update on the Housing Element. But I just wanted to chime in that maybe we should take this a little bit more seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Rule.
Mayor, we currently have no raised hands from our Zoom participants.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to our Zoom participants for our remote option. Now is the time to speak on general public comment. If you'd like to raise your hand and use the raise hand function, we'll just give you one more minute before, one more moment before we move on. And let's move on.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members would like to remove out of the consent calendar?
Yes, I would like to pull item H.
Very good. Anything else?
I would like. Hello?
Yes.
I would like to pull item B. And also I'm going to pull item G, which is review of the Housing Element.
Okay. Shall we start with D? Then, or should we start with the motion to, to approve the ones that are? Okay, so do I have a motion to accept A, B, C, E, F, and I?
No, sorry, Mayor, not B.
Not B.
A, C.
Councilmember Rule is pulling B and G.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the B.
No problem.
My mistake.
So I'll move to approve A, C, D, F, oh, E, F, and I.
Thank you.
And Mayor, under the, with Councilmember Rule, remote, under the Brown Act will require roll call votes for all votes.
Great.
Very good.
And just for, did you say you're pulling D or was it B?
It was B as in boy.
And not D at all? D is fine.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Great. Mr. Montgomery, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Wonderful. And let's start with B, Ms. Rule.
Yes, so in looking at the warrants, I noticed that there is nothing for legal bills from either Myers Knave or from Matt's firm. For, I think we're still looking at December, January, and February for Myers Knave that haven't been submitted and for Matt's from January, February, and March. And in the previous three months, October, November, and December, they were all paid within a month. So given that our budget is looking for legal fees over a million dollars right now, I'm hoping that we can stay a little bit more current so we can understand really where we are with the fees. I don't know why there's a delay in them showing up, but I think we should make an effort to make them as current and as possible so that we can track what our actual costs are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rule. Any comment, Mr. Harvey? Or, okay. Okay. Let's move on then to item G, the Housing Element, Ms. Rule.
May, Mr. Mayor, maybe it's wise to approve each of these polled items.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then let's start with B. Mr. Montgomery.
I had a, I'd like to hear a motion in a second, please, Mayor.
Oh, yes. I move to approve item B.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Rule, moving on to G.
Yes, so once again, I think review of the city's Housing Element is fascinating and I want to thank Lucas for putting this forward. I'm, just wanted to mention that, you know, it may not just be a consent item or perhaps it goes into our goals, but certainly fitting into this review would be the comments by Star Child about rental assistance that has been in our Housing Element for years. So if we were doing a review, we could actually say here that we have provided no rental assistance, even though we have said so in our Housing Element. And I just wanted to sort of make that connection with this progress report, which by the way, I love. I love, I love to read these numbers, so thank you very much. But that's all.
Ms. Rule, if I might point out, in the goal setting that we're having, under the affordable housing piece, one of the tactics there is annual financial contribution to help of Ojai Rental Assistance, et cetera. We took help of Ojai out, but the items there. So we're, we're publicly saying we're curious and going to work on it.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I was, yeah, I, I voted for that for sure. I just wanted to make sure that we, we do indeed and that we are consistent really with our Housing Element and reviewing our Housing Element. That's all, but thank you.
Nope, great. Okay.
I have a.
Yes, please.
Quick question on that item. So for Lucas, I am not familiar with the format of this report, but I assume that it complies with what HCD requires that we do on a annual report basis.
Yes. So the interesting thing about this report is it, it bases itself on this spreadsheet. I do not get to go in and change the formatting of that spreadsheet. It is set in stone by HCD, Housing and Community Development Department. So what I get to do is plug in those numbers for, for the entire year. And what it really boils down to is those projects that have come in for review, those that have gone through plan check and those have, that have gotten certificates of occupancy. And those are the, those are the different buckets that we get to plug into. And then also, in addition to that, we provide updates to our different programs. One of the nineteen programs that we've got going on with our Housing Element for the sixth cycle.
Yes.
I have one question in regards to, you know, what's considered very low, low, the different types of housing. Is it possible to put what the percentage is with a dollar amount? So down the road, if we're looking, we can, you know, go back to say, oh, in 2025, it was this?
Uh, could. The only, the only concern there is, is from year to year, that's a sliding scale. It just depends on what the, what the average cost is per house. That then, then tends to be the sliding scale because it's based on a percentage of that, of that market rate.
County median income is, the state sets those.
Yeah, I am.
County median income, correct.
Yeah. But I think we could probably put, again, the format of this report is dictated by the state, but we could put a cover sheet, I think, that would have the income limits for each year, each year.
Yeah.
It would just be nice down the road if you had a, you know, it's right there.
It's easy enough to do.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a good question. Yes.
Actually, I'm glad that, that Councilmember Rule pulled this because I just wanted to point out how many low-income, very, very low, moderate, we have a lot of truly affordable houses on this list, or housing projects on this list. Thirty-one very low-income deed restricted, one low-income deed restricted, twenty-six moderate-income deed restricted, and only one above moderate-income deed, uh, housing project. I think that says a lot about our priorities and our values in this community and I'm just, I'm, I'm really happy to see this much being moved forward to help the, the people who, who, who need it the most.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Steber, I have a technical question. When does, when does a structure or a building, when does it get counted in the RENA numbers? Is it when it's been permitted and approved or when it's moved in? Or what's, when does it get counted?
When it's been final. That's when we get to truly count it.
Okay.
So I, the foreshadowing here is this, this body has, this council has approved several projects from an approval standpoint. Now we're working into the, the plan checks phases. Once permits are issued, then we work towards the final. Once final comes forward, then we get to count them. But it's interesting because you end up seeing them kind of progress from phase to phase. And HCD is watching, so.
Just for clarification, final does not mean move in ready or does that what?
That means.
It means move in ready. Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Sorry, I'm using some of the technical pieces.
No, no, no. That's why I keep asking you technical questions. Thank you very much, sir. Any other comments? I have two public comments here. Bill Miley and then Star Child on item G. Mr. Miley? Do you still want to do it? Star Child, go first. Thank you.
I wish that the housing in this report existed instead of just being planned. One thing I notice is that ADUs, even if they're rented for high prices, can count towards our RENA numbers, even if they're not affordable. One thing I noticed is that ADU that's already rented but unpermitted, when it becomes permitted, counts towards our RENA, RENA numbers, even though it's not new housing. We could meet our RENA numbers in this city without building new housing. And we have to remember that RENA numbers don't capture the need for affordable housing in Ojai, that we've not met the need for affordable housing in Ojai and that we have to go beyond the RENA numbers to do so.
Thank you, Star Child. Mr. Miley?
Hello.
Hello.
That's my standard reading. So the annual housing element report to the state. As I read it, no low-income housing. I noticed that almost all of the building permits were for accessory dwelling units. And I understand that the state housing law allows these to be counted for the regional housing number assessment. However, looking at the Fair Housing Chart showing income-level rentals, ninety-nine percent are, and ninety-nine percent are rentals. There is no information available to show what rents they're charging. And I know the state says you don't have to do that. Thus, it can be assumed all are moderate income or above. And so I conclude, there's not much help for lower-income folks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Okay, anything else on G?
Yeah, I have a, just a, a brief comment.
Yes.
Refresh my memory, Lucas. Aren't ADUs considered moderate-income housing just per forma?
Across the board, yes.
Across the board, okay. And, and just, just to point out that the cabin village accounts for thirty of the thirty-one very low-income deed restricted housing. Just, you know, to, to, to the point that, you know, to Star Child's point that there, that it's not, it's not actual housing. But to, so to read these is, and I, I know that the Housing Element is really about projecting. That's, that's why it's, you know, six to eight years every Housing Element. But I did just want to point that out. Interesting.
Anything to respond?
So, yeah, I mean, each, so there's a reason, I think there's a reason why the annual progress report is literally an annual progress report. Because it's, it's kind of a tool that's used to, to kind of gauge where the city is going. And it's one of the reasons why, I mean, I know there's a lot of discussion regarding ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And it's one of the reasons why we already, when we projected this, looking at the sixth cycle before we brought to City Council for authorization to submit to the state in 2021, end of 2020, we made the argument in the early on that, look, our ADUs are going to cover this fifty-three benchmark easily. And they said, not good enough. You've got to do more than that. Understand that you're going to meet that and exceed it, but the ADUs are just one piece to the puzzle. And even the existing non-conforming, that ended up going through the compliance program, ended up getting counted, they exist, absolutely, they exist. Bringing them online to, to ensure that they are safe, to be, to, in terms, in terms of being habitated, that's the important piece for the compliance program. So I just wanted to note a couple of those pieces and I, I appreciate, you're right. In terms of looking at the data, from one year to the next, you're going to see some heavy numbers on one end versus the other. It's just kind of a sliding scale. You're not going to have projects all come, come in at the same time, although that would be kind of interesting that, if that happened. But we, we tend to see a filtering of projects, even the projects that we have going on right now through the design review phase into the plan check and, and building permit phase. We're aware of, of projects that are moving into those phases and either being ready to be constructed or getting themselves into position for that. So it's just, it's the mark, the market in some cases tends to, to drive that trend.
Thank you, Mr. Steber.
And Mayor, one more point out, if I may?
Yes.
The best visualization of this is Attachment A, page seven, lays out the entire eight-year planning period and shows our progress in each year, adding, and again, this is what marks certificates of occupancy. What doesn't show up on that chart is the already entitled but not yet built Cabrillo and Becker Projects, which together add up to fifty-something very low and another thirty or forty, uh, low-income units. So those will be coming through. They're not yet at the certificate of occupancy stage, but those will be coming through as well.
Thank you for the.
And if I could just add to, to what Mr. Summers was saying, even those, those projects, we're, we're keeping a close eye on those and we're getting constant updates. Some of those require federal funds, state funds, in order to then move forward. And some of them don't. They're, I mean, some of these projects that are moving forward are being funded internally and they're not looking for any sort of, any sort of grant funding or support.
Mr. Whitman?
Yeah, just a quick comment and, and Lucas and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of what, you know, we experience and have to comply with in terms of state housing law never examined Ojai. It's designed on a statewide, one-size-fits-all. And, and ADUs have been given special treatment because the legislature decided that they could remove regulations for the construction of ADUs if they declared that those are affordable. Period, end of story. We don't get to debate because the legislature told us that. That's often what we're dealing with when we're addressing state housing rules and where they get to call something affordable. The developer gets all kinds of benefits because it's quote-unquote affordable, but it really may not provide benefit to our community based upon our community needs.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Ms. Rule, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to, and, and I kind of, you know, I wanted to say once again to Lucas, thank you very much for all of this information. And, you know, when you look at the tables, you know, it's proposed, there are, it tells you what it. And, um, you know, when you look at the tables, you know, it's proposed, there are, it tells you what it is, proposed units, um, affordability by household incomes. Um, and once again, I think that the more the council and, uh, the community understands how this is working and it's, it's not that complicated. Um, I think the better off we sort of all are to know that things are in process. Um, you know, applications have been submitted, for instance. That's where some numbers come up and, you know, uh, certificates of occup, occupancy have been, uh, have been, have been approved. Those are, those are different things. So, um, this chart's really, I, I, I find it very, very helpful. Um, and, you know, I know, having served on VCOG, which is where we, we get our RENA numbers from the county. Um, and I know, or SCAG, and, and I know that, uh, all of those are changing. And they're now going to start incorporating, uh, specific numbers for, um, for very-low income. For instance, it used to be that low income included very-low and very, very-low. But now they're going to have their own numbers for that. So we'll see changes as they come.
Thank you, Ms. Rule. Mr. Montgomery, is there anybody online for this item?
Mayor, we have no raised hands on Z.
Can I have a motion to approve item G?
I'll move.
I'll move. I'll second it.
Great. Motion and second. Mr. Montgomery?
Roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, I know what I wanted to say. I wanted to say that, to se, I'm sorry, I wanted to second what Councilmember Lang said about Ojai really has done a phenomenal job in meeting our RENA numbers. I think we're one of the only towns in the county that have done that. And we've pushed through these units in order to meet those numbers, but also in order to try to start providing the housing that, you know, our constituents need. And, um, I'm really proud of that. I think that's really, it's, it's something to be proud of.
Thank you for all your work, Mr. Seabird.
Yeah, thank you.
It's the support through council that makes it possible.
Understood. Um, we, we're on item H. May I speak to it or would you like to speak to it first?
Uh, go ahead.
Um, just this. So this is the two councilmember request reinstatement of Susie Taylor's Chair of Parks and Rec Commission. That came from difficulties in communication, then very good meetings. And I feel very confident that we have a very solid communication plan so we can forward this, um, commission to be embodied. I think we could start interviewing as soon as next week and we will endeavor to do so. Um, and that the communication that was worked on to try to bring a resolution prior to that, I will take full responsibility. I wish I would have done more. But, um, I, we have it resolved and I think we're good, we're in great shape and we have three, we need four more and we've got a plan.
And I just wanted, I, I just wanted to add to this that I've, uh, spoken with, uh, Chair Taylor and also Vice Chair, uh, Inter. And I just want to thank them for being so on top of things and, and for their incredible service. And, um, and, and I should have listened to Councilmember Meng last time. So anyway, so there, there's, I just, uh, wanted to, to, to say that we have an incredible team with, uh, Sage and Susie. And I'm, I'm excited that they're, that we're moving forward again.
Anything else? All right. Motion to.
Ditto.
Oh, ditto. Is, is that a motion there?
Uh, sure. I make a motion that we reinstate Susie Taylor as Chair of the Park and Rec Commission. Um.
That's good. I second. Mr. Montgomery?
Roll call. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Um, moving on to our sole item left, um, public hearing, number two, design review permit regarding proposed permanent supportive housing project located at 408 South Signal Street. Mr. Seabird, whoever's taking the lead?
Uh, it will be, it will be me, but it's a, uh, it's going to be, um, a village to kind of walk through this PowerPoint presentation. If I could have the PowerPoint presentation brought forward. Uh, good evening, community members, um, anybody that's watching in TV land. My name is Lucas Seabird. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. I've operated in that position for the last five years. The item before you tonight is the proposed Cabin Village, the permanent supportive housing project. Before I go into the presentation, I want to note a couple of things. First, uh, there's a number of technical, technical reports that are still online on the landing page for the Cabin Village through the city's website. Um, in addition to that, there are summaries that are in the back room. Um, I ask you to, to take a look at those. I think we have one each for each of the eight technical reports. Um, don't take those with you. Please provide those for, to the community. It roughly sums up about eight hundred pages worth of information and technical information and guidance, um, as well. In addition to that, there was a comment letter that was, um, brought forward and we took the opportunity as staff to respond to that comment letter because it had a lot of technical pieces, uh, tied to it. That response letter, as well as the original letter, is also in the back room. There are several copies. And copies to that letter are also before the council, um, on their dais as well tonight. Next slide, please. So the item tonight includes several different pieces. Um, more importantly, let's identify who the applicant is. Um, in this case, it is the City of Ojai. The proposed developer is Dignity Moves as a nonprofit. Um, we have both Joanne Price and Jeff Gaddis here tonight to speak on that. Uh, the proposed project architect is Dylan Johnson. Um, he is not here tonight, but Dignity Moves representatives will do an excellent job of talking through the design pieces in terms of elevation, site plan, floor plan. The landscaping as a proposed landscape arch, um, the proposed landscape architect is Kathy Nolan. She is here tonight as well and will be talking through the landscape pieces. We also have, um, I think online, let me just double-check, we have Jan Skow here to talk through any sort of, oh, he's physically here, okay. Uh, he's here tonight, uh, to talk through any and have, and respond to any questions regarding any of the tree pieces, uh, to this proposal. And then we also have the civil engineer, uh, Caitlin Bush, who's here to speak regarding, um, uh, the engineering pieces, ADA, all those wonderful things, um, for the project. So recommendations, this isn't the, um, verbatim pieces. This is really kind of the twenty-thousand-foot level. Uh, but it's really the approve the lower public, in terms of the recommendations by staff being brought forward to this body tonight, is, um, to consider approving the lower public works yard as a location for the, for the Cabin Village project. The second piece is to consider accepting the public comment, which as a public hearing, that is what we'll be doing it at one point in this, in this, uh, public hearing setting. And to continue the hearing until the development management agreement is brought forward. And then to that point regarding that, uh, the director or to direct the city manager to negotiate the development management agreement on the proposed project site and bring the project back to City Council for final approval. So really tonight, we're looking at, um, the project as a whole and then identifying its location, um, in terms of whether or not to earmark that, uh, moving forward. So next slide, please. Let's first talk through, just briefly, um, existing site conditions. The existing use for this site, you can see it in yellow, um, kind of in a rectangular form, is the lower public works yard. The zoning for this, from a technicality standpoint, is public or PL. That is a general plan designation of public. And the surrounding uses, to the north is vacant parcels, which are city-owned. To the east is the remaining public works maintenance, um, facility, as well as the offices, also publicly owned. To the west, beyond Ventura Street, is single-family residences. And to the south is also single-family residences, um, abutting, abutting this property. Next slide, please. Consistency. Uh, at the Planning Commission meeting in November of last year, and then again, it was really kind of, um, talked about fairly specifically and intentionally. And that is the permanent supportive housing as a similar use. Now, what I want to first talk through is the why. Why are we having this discussion regarding the similar uses category? Why are we talking about permanent supportive housing as a similar use to something else within our use charts? Well, our use charts do not identify permanent supportive housing as an identified permitted or conditionally permitted use within our, um, charts, our tables within, um, within the use charts themselves. But our code actually has a provision built in that allows for those types of uses that are not specifically identified within those, within the use charts themselves to be identified as a use that's similar to another use that's identified within our, our zoning and more specifically as a use that's identified within that zoning category. So in this case, the permanent supportive housing as a term, as a use is, and we believe is, similar to offices, government services. Now, the justification for that is something that's, that's definitely, um, boiled down in one of our attachments. I'm giving you kind of a high-level, uh, piece from a justification standpoint. It's folded into first, this, the use itself as office government services typically have a state funding mechanism tied to it, plus local control. And what that means is it's not something that's privatized, it's not something that has, um, uh, private monies tied to it. These are public monies. Uh, the ERF grant is one piece to that puzzle. As local control, the city itself is controlling the ins and outs and the daily operations of this type of use moving forward. Additionally, um, when you're looking at similar uses, you're also looking at what other, other similar uses are within the PL zone? Well, of the seventy-eight parcels that we have that are zoned and identified as PL or have a general, um, plan designation as P, uh, there are four that we've identified that are either a mixed-use or multifamily that have that similar use, um, category. And there's even one that, from a density standpoint, which then bleeds into the zoning consistency and general plan consistency, that speaks more specifically to, to density, um, as it relates to the, to the similar uses category. So I think it's important to understand that when you're going from a, a use category that isn't identified and then marrying it to or identifying how it's similar to another use that's identified within the use chart, I think it's important to note that offices as government services has the, the best fit for what we're talking about here. Um, the use itself includes, um, residential uses, but it also includes support services as a permanent supportive housing, um, uh, model. And I know we'll talk about that more, um, with, with representatives from, uh, from Dignity Moves. But I think it's important just to understand, this is kind of setting the table as to how and why this, this use has a, a nexus to, if you will, to the offices and government services. Next slide, please. Now, there were a number of public comments that came in on, both on the November meeting with Planning Commission as a public hearing, uh, for comments to be, to be received. And then again, at the February nineteenth meeting with the Planning Commission. And I think it was a combination of the community coming up and speaking and raising concerns and, and questions. But also Planning Commission recognizing those questions, concerns, and then folding those into what we've identified as nineteen, um, comments that were received. Now, we're happy to report that of those comments that we received, we've either addressed or considered all nineteen. With, when, in, in looking at this, there were plan revisions that we physically met with, um, the design team in Dignity Moves to go out and physically understand what changes could, could physically take place that wouldn't, that wouldn't take a, take this project, um, into a, uh, into not being, um, not being feasible, I guess, to a certain degree. So the plan revisions, nine in total, I've highlighted those here, unit size, windows. Uh, we're going to be talking about each of these, um, specifically as, as the plans are unfolded through this PowerPoint presentation. The general comments, ten of the ten, we've either addressed or considered throughout. Um, and those will be, uh, discussed as well throughout the plans and, and, and as a part of this PowerPoint presentation. But I wanted to just note those, uh, as we move forward here. So next slide, please. Technical reports. There were a number of technical reports that evolved as this project evolved. And that, that started in August of last year and it has progressed into what we have here today. Eight reports were prepared by, um, professionals through what's referred to as the Phase One and then eventually the Phase Two. And then there was a SOAS report done, traffic, uh, demand analysis that was done for this project. Noise or sound, depending on, on how you're hearing it. Uh, land survey, biological resources assessment, and then tree protection. All of those are important, even as a site being vacant. All important pieces regardless of whether the city's doing it or a private developer is doing it. This is just the standard procedure for operations. Now, the overall cost for that is right around sixty-eight thousand dollars in terms of what we're looking at here. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, go back to the previous slide just real quickly. The Phase Two has had quite a bit of public comment. We've seen a lot of that come forward. Um, and even there was responses that were put together that's on the council's dais. There was responses to very specific pieces to the Phase Two. Um, we'll have Rencon, who put together that, that Phase Two, uh, speak to two pieces to that at, um, later on in the presentation. And as a matter of, of any sort of responses that come forward, um, through public comment. Next slide, please. So here's where I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin first, who's our project engineer. And she'll speak through, speak to the changes that came forward, really kind of from the February, um, nineteenth Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, Caitlin.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
So the, um, the building has been cited, uh, in order to save as many trees as possible. We understand the importance of vegetation and mature oak trees to this community and we've done our best to honor that importance. Um, so the building footprint actually has been pushed west, closer to Ventura Street compared to what was seen at Planning Commission. I'd like to point out this plan is, um, oriented with north to the right, as I direct you, north, southeast-west. Vehicular access will be provided off of Montgomery Street, including fire access. The red line work shows, uh, fire access coming up Montgomery. And then that T-shape is the fire department turnaround. ADA access has been moved from being provided from Montgomery Street. Now we are providing ADA access via a ramp to Ventura Street. This was in direct response to public comment and commissioner input. Uh, this ramp, it would be compliant with all building code. We still are proposing to provide pedestrian access to Montgomery Street. However, this would not be ADA accessible. There is a sidewalk following along the north side of the proposed driveway down to Montgomery. This would allow residents to be able to more directly access resources on Montgomery Street such as the Ojai Bike Path or help of Ojai down on Montgomery Street as well. However, um, this access to Ventura Street, we believe, will be ultimately safer. And it corrects, it connects directly to an existing sidewalk on Ventura Street. This, I would like to point out that this ADA ramp would be lighted, um. Again, this was proposed at Planning Commission, but it was a question that did come up in public comment a few times. And, um, our landscape architect Kathy Nolan can touch more on the details for that. We have also increased the size of storage on the north side of the proposed parking lot. Again, in response to public comment. At this point, that is considered a flex space as we get into final design and we are able to more accurately gauge what residents' needs are going to be. We can pinpoint what exactly that storage would be, whether it be bike storage, storage for belongings, what have you. We do have proposed bike racks in front of the proposed storage buildings as well, again, in response to public comment. Um, so I think that is a good summary of what is being proposed at the site now and what changes we have made since Planning Commission. If you have any comments, I'm happy to answer now. Otherwise, I will hand it over for building design discussion.
Any questions? Nope.
If, if we could, let's try to hold the comments.
Okay, great.
Or questions to the end. Um, if I could have Joanne Price, as well as, as Jeff, if you could, could come up and kind of just speak to this, to the site plan as well. And then after this, we have floor plan and then elevations to follow.
Okay, good evening.
Okay, good evening. I'm Joanne Price. I'm co-founder with Dignity Moves and also Chief Real Estate Officer. And I just want to say, I'm standing behind a very talented group of architects. So you've just heard from Caitlin Birch, the engineer, and Cathy Nolan, landscape architect. And one thing that always strikes me when I come to Ojai is how special this community is. And that's in the design, the aesthetic, the community itself. And we want to honor that in the design. That's why we've moved away from modular construction, because what this community really needs is architecture and aesthetics that really fit in with the vibe. I think there's a vibe here in Ojai. And that comes down to like, you know, the old Spanish tile, the red roofs, the arches, the quality of the materials, and that goes into like the windows. Like the windows, the recesses, the aluminum. They are materials that are very long-lasting, but they also give the quality that this community needs and the durability. This project is permanent housing. It's to last for 55 years. It's going to be solar-ready, but it's also going to be sustainable. So you probably heard that we're designing the building probably in a straw bale. And that's, you know, it talks to our ethos. It's Dignity Moves, we're all about innovation, but we're also about being sympathetic to the communities in which we move into. So this project is designed around a courtyard. And Jeff can speak to some of the services. But what this really means is, everything is onsite. This is a very well-designed, thought-out site with comprehensive services. And that courtyard is going to be the healing place. And what we hear a lot about is, we don't want people loitering on the streets, on the sidewalks. Well, here we have a community where everything is onsite for pets, for planting, for healing. And most importantly, this is a project that will actually get the city to a functional zero. And that's important, and you should be proud of that. When I looked at your unsheltered numbers, this project will get you there. And what that means is, people do not have to resort to, and neither will they have to live on the streets. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you and good evening. I want to just speak to the intention of this design, but not only the intention of the design, but the entire project itself from inception. I've been involved in this, I feel like, close to two years now that I've been engaged with the community, including engagement with the encampment, which is now Ojai Tent Town. And the level of effort from the city manager, from city administration, and the city council to help support not only Ojai Tent Town, but getting to this point so that we can get people from Tent Town to this site. And I would have to say for you, in the 40 years that I've been involved in projects and the study I've done in my own lived experience with the subject matter, which is why I do this work, this is the most important project I've ever been a part of. And it's not by the size of the project, but again, the intention of the project. I've been worried about housing insecurity and climate change for decades. And here we are, and we're in that crisis. It's now found us, it's found everybody, and we're finding more and more people falling into homelessness, precarity. We're seeing numbers in LA that are staggering from those fires where people are getting pushed into homelessness. So building a climate-focused, environmentally-focused project like this, to me, is catalytic. That Ojai could be the lead in doing this, that we could take this around the state into other communities to build these projects that are more integrated, more nature-based, and more environmentally sound to move forward. I don't want to see us keep building the same way. We have to change the way we're building, and we have to change the way that we're living together. And that's why this, from a communal perspective, this is how people really are meant to live together in these communal spaces, sharing space. That's how recovery works, that's how healing works. It doesn't work in isolation. It works when we work together. And this design is, this site is designed to bring people out to work together, to live together, to heal together, to take care of each other. It creates both a sense of agency, but more important, what I would like to see and what I think we need as a culture right now in these divided times, is a focus on interdependence. And this site is an interdependent, integrated site. So I'm just so honored to be here and to be a part of this, and I thank you all for your effort. The level of local skill that went into this has to be noted too. The level of talent, we're drawing local talent onto this project to make it really shine, not just for Ojai, but beyond. Thanks again.
Hold on, before you go any further, Jeff. Before I move to the next slide, I think you're going to be able to speak to the floor plan probably better than I. But I think it's important to note, from the Planning Commission and within those two meetings that we had in November and again in February, there was a lot of discussion, and I think Cathy may even speak to this as well during the landscaping, a lot of discussion regarding further enhancing the bike and kind of that bicycle access and parking. And we've included that in the site plan itself. And in addition to that, there was a charging piece, an element to that, and we've included that as well. I know Cathy's got that dialed in through her landscaping as well, excuse me. So if we could, let's move on to the floor plan. Next slide, please. So here, it's actually designed around 30 individual units, and two of those are actually double units. And then to the front or to the north is where the communal spaces are in terms of food, and then restrooms and, I'm sorry, restrooms and then also office space as well. Jeff, could you speak to the kind of the orientation, the reason for this proposal? Sorry.
And you're referring to the design with the communal rooms, the site, the size of the rooms, just the flow of the site in general? This is akin to a number of the sites that we built. They're gated, they're inward-facing, so that's drawing people off the streets to live together. Again, it draws people out. As you see the rooms, people move out into the common areas. Those common areas are central to how the people live together. And even when you see in Ojai Tent Town, that's how people are living together. So it's really bringing the way that people are living together in a tent town into a space where there's going to be a similar and familiar feel to it. That's a trauma-informed approach. Many times when we bring people in, when we just drop them into an apartment on their own, it's a very destabilizing process. They go right back into isolation, and it really affects their recovery. The fact that we have common areas for people to come and hang out together and see each other, the fact that you go to a common kitchen and you can eat together, you can choose to eat together. There'll even be food events there, where we'll have events where people will eat together, barbecues, things like that. It draws people out of the room to be able to live together and be together. So again, they don't go into isolation. Because when you've been through that level of trauma that comes with homelessness, the ability or you go right back into isolation, that really hampers your ability to move forward and recovery. And again, the site draws people to move in. So the common areas, the kitchen you see, there's a dog run in there, so we'll have people out to have their dogs out there to take care of them. All these things draw people out together. Food is one of the biggest deals there is. And even with staff working with people there, the property manager, case managers, when they come in, not only do they have the office, they have places to sit with people around in there and be comfortable and safe to sit outside, to commune, to talk. You will see residents coming out, sitting on the benches, talking to each other, supporting one another. There'll be real community there. They know how to live together, but this really fosters this design the way it is. It really draws them out and fosters them to be able to live together.
Thank you, Jeff. In addition to that, I just want to cover some of the pieces that came out of both the November and again in the February meetings with the Planning Commission, and really kind of from hearing from the community. One piece that I want to note is now there are windows within the bathroom. Initially, we were looking at just a skylight or clear story kind of piece, but it's gone beyond that, and we have full windows with ingress egress opportunities there as well. I think the other thing that I wanted to note and just kind of understand from a history standpoint, when this project first came forward in November, there or before a body for the community to kind of weigh in on something, the idea was for each of these units to be about 120 square feet in size. Recognizing that the community wasn't willing to accept that and wanted to see more, pushed the envelope further. We came forward with then a proposal for about 160 square feet, and then boosted that to 180 and recognized the opportunities there with the restrooms. In November, there was no interest, or not necessarily interest, but there was no foresight to the restroom aspect. We just saw an opportunity for it to just be a place to reside, and then all the other facilities were somewhere else. Here, we're recognizing that opportunity for each of these individuals within these spaces to have a place to sleep as well as a place to use the restroom from that standpoint. So it's been a progression of the design over time, moving away from the model of, as Dignity Moves had identified, individual units kind of sitting in kind of a tiny home kind of format into what we're seeing here, which is really kind of three separate buildings that have one roof, one communal roof here. So just wanted to note those pieces. Brian, anything else from Planning Commission?
Yeah, so regarding what Lucas was speaking to, kind of where the, kind of the progression of the design over time, how we were initially looking at 30 modular tiny homes of 120 square feet, they have now been expanded to 180 square feet, all including their own in-suite bathroom, which was initially intended to be a shared sanitation facility. So this is really unlike anything Dignity Moves has ever done, and we're going above and beyond in that regard. And as far as expanding the units any further, we have looked at that, and we've determined that it would unreasonably impact the tree canopy as there are already going to be five trees to be removed out of the protected 59, and six out of those 59 trees will be majorly impacted. And our initial goal was to impact zero trees. But with this design, considering how robust it is and full-fledged it is, we think that it's a fair compromise. And replacement is also planned, and we'll get into that in the landscape section of this presentation.
All right, thank you, Brian. Next slide, please. If I could have either Jeff or Joanne to come up to speak to the elevation piece. I'll just kind of give the intro. When this was brought forward initially, it really, in November, it kind of had the same look and feel as it did in February. The biggest piece, and I would say the biggest thing to take out of this, is the change for the windows, and more importantly, on the backside of each of these sides. There was a lot of blank space. These windows have offered an opportunity for some undulation and some character, so.
Yeah, the windows help elevate the, like, the quality of the building, but they also act as egress from the bathroom. So these units, they're each about 180 square feet. They have the sleeping room, so you have your private space with room for desk, storage, and then the bathroom where you have egress out. But you can see that that aesthetic, when you look around town, it's very in keeping with the town's aesthetic. And the architect, we really tried to make a mark different, like radial difference, between pedestrians and vehicles. That's very important to have that separation. And even from the street level, we're only about 25 feet from the street level from Ventura. And we're within walking distance. But you've got like character in the quality of the materials, the windows are recessed, you've got the stucco, you've got the red roof tile, and you're saving as many trees as possible. We're avoiding the power lines. And it's very in keeping with the buildings that you have here.
Thank you. Yeah, the stucco, I think, does an excellent job of staying in tune with what kind of Ojai has a theme. Next slide, please. Let's dive into the landscaping with that. I'd like to invite Cathy Nolan to come up and speak with some potential color commentary from Jan Scott.
A mini set here, just in case I need to look at it. Well, you know, I couldn't mention one thing about the architecture that you didn't mention, and that was adding at the front doors, I believe it's a, what's the proper word? Almost like an opaque glass that would allow more light into the space. And I know that was one of the comments that came up at Planning Commission.
Frosted, I think.
Frosted, thank you. But I couldn't help but see it there, so I had to mention it. So with the landscape, we actually have two areas. We've got the interior courtyard, which really is the same as we presented in November. And I'm happy to make comments about that. But I guess, I think the first thing I'm going to comment about is the changes that we made on the exterior of the building since our February Planning Commission meeting. So I think the biggest thing was that we did change the ADA access, as Caitlin mentioned. And I wanted to say, my landscaping on the exterior of the building really follows where the grading has happened. So it's not overly landscaped. Number one, because we have existing vegetation, a lot of oak trees that really provide the screening on both Ventura and Montgomery Street. So that's all going to stay, so we have, you know, the property's well-canopied with native oaks, is what I'm trying to say. But the big thing that I wanted to bring up again was, and we went over this in February, that we applied the state fire code in the landscape. And what that means is, there's a zone zero that starts at the building, and it's five feet out. Generally, there's basically no plants or very minimal planting, no mulch is allowed unless it's bare soil, like say decomposed granite or gravel. So nothing flammable. So we're honoring that for a zone. The second zone goes out 30 feet, and as one of the public comments we had earlier about fire, when you start looking at the fire, the new and latest fire code for landscaping, it's very strict. I mean, you literally have to get, you know, your ruler out to figure out how far apart the plants are, how tall they're going to be, and a list of prescribed plants that you can kind of pull from. So it's very limited. But at the same time, I'm making it very beautiful and aesthetically pleasing. And so we got that, the zone zero out to five feet, zone one goes to 30 feet, and then the next zone, two, goes to 100 feet. Which pretty much, I've got it on the plan, you can't really see it, but if you looked up close, zones are all labeled. The other thing that I wanted to point out was, and it's been mentioned already by the other presenters, our intention when we went into the project was, you know, to try to preserve to the best of our ability, all of the protected oak trees. As we move the building around, it turns out, yes, we are going to have to remove five oak trees. Some trees are impacted. That said, we are required to do what you call like remediation or mitigation. And that total dollar value is $34,200. On the plan, you see the green circles. Those are indicating the mitigation trees. But I also wanted to throw out, and I don't know that, I don't think, are we looking at the tree protection plan at all in the slideshow? I don't recall.
That's not on this.
Okay, it's not on there. But it was submitted to City Council. And on the last page, I think it was the L12 sheet, I actually have a mitigation table that says the dollar amount. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, if City Council wanted to, you know, make a comment or have the discussion, or if they preferred, we can do a different combination of trees that potentially maybe would not all be planted here on the site, but that could be planted on city property. So I just wanted to throw that out. The challenge was, if you look at all the existing tree canopies on the site, there's not a lot of room to add trees. So predominantly where I've added the trees are, there's one at the entrance down at Montgomery Street, the driveway. I allowed site access. If you're pulling in and out, you would be able to have clear, good visibility. And then there are five trees located up where the ADA ramp is. That is a slope, but it's fully exposed and it's a south hot exposure. So in my opinion, that was probably the best place, and really one of the only places I could add more trees. And so now, and eventually, that staircase and ADA ramp would be shaded from like hot, you know, afternoon sun. The other thing I just wanted to briefly mention, I know it's been kindly loosely discussed, we have a storage area. We have the bike parking. The bike parking is actually covered bike parking, and it's shown on the plan. There's also a pet relief area there, because I do know a lot of the residents do have pets. So we accommodated with that. And then, of course, there's a trash enclosure. So we accommodated with that. Um and then of course, there's a trash enclosure area. I also wanted to mention that the new pedestrian path going up to Ventura Street or walk and staircase and the ADA ramp are both um lit with landscape lighting. So there's a bollard, which is, you know, basically a, a light on a low post uh for the ADA ramp area. And then the staircase and the adjoining walls all have what you would call like a step or recess light. So it's all low voltage LED lighting, so energy compliant. I also wanted to address too that um Caitlin, our civil engineer, designed several bioswales. They're on, one on the uh east side of the building and one adjacent to Montgomery Street. So potentially, you know, any water that we're capturing is going to go back into the site, which actually will help. But, you know, potentially depending on how much rain we get, groundwater recharge um and or just minimizing irrigation in the landscape. And then I can just briefly touch on the courtyard area if you want, or if that's enough information for tonight.
Well, we've got two more, two more slides.
Yeah, I could address those.
Yeah, could you speak just briefly on the gray water conversation that we've been having?
Yes, so we did have a conversation and that topic came up and I, I actually loved doing projects with gray water. But our, this is what came up in the conversations. So there's three types of approved in the code gray water systems. The simplest one is landry, excuse me, laundry to landscape. Basically, your washing machine water goes out into landscape, you would create um an underground storage area with mulch. The microbes in the mulch actually will help break down any um organisms that you may want to address. The second one is a simple of system, and that's a system where you couldn't include the laundry, but also your showers and sinks, not your dishwasher, not your dish sink, and obviously not the restrooms, meaning the, the toilets. But you could do the showers and the sinks. That water in addition goes out into a dugout area that's typically mulched. The mulch and the microorganisms will help clean up the water. The third one is a standard system, it's more complicated, and this is where you're actually capturing the water. It's going into a tank, you're filtering it and you're, you know, pumping it. So it has to be regulated a lot more. The hot item that I brought up was, if you're going to do any of those systems, you should be using a bio compatible or bio compatible products. So that could be laundry, that could be shampoo, that could be soap, you know, anything you could use in a shower to, to wash your hands. The question came up, is that something we want to do on the site now that we're, we don't want to do gray water? But I think it's more like an operations question. Would um these soap and the laundry soap and the shampoo be a stock thing that every resident gets so that we are, can ensure that it's bio compatible? How would you regulate that or monitor that so that the system functions correctly? And I think we kind of got to the point where, where yes, we're interested, but it, this is worthy of more discussion.
Alright, thank you. Next, next slide.
Next slide, okay. Um so this is a courtyard, and I'm sorry that's so black, the courtyard looks so black, it's the um, the way the hatch turned out. But I'm really excited about this courtyard. I, and as was mentioned earlier, I just see this as the place to hang out. What I tried to do is to give it um kind of a bare bone structure, so you know, that it functions. But at the same time, there's flexibility, so the, the furniture, there's actually um on the um north side or the upper side of that courtyard, I'm showing picnic tables. Accommodating um, actually, you know, more than thirty residents, probably up to about forty-eight, so you could have guests. The tables could be moved, you could roll a barbecue in, you could change the configuration. Then in the center, there's a um, a central courtyard tree. Um I kind of vacillated about what to pick, but I wanted to meet the fire code too, so I actually picked a fruitless olive that will give shade. Basically, no fruit, so you won't have the mess. But um the width of the canopy would actually and could easily be maintained to meet the ten foot, keep your canopies ten feet away from a roof in the fire code. Then to the south of that, you see the rectangular boxes, those are actually raised garden beds. I'm not going to specify what goes in it because I want the residents to be able to have ownership and be able to do that. I'll make some suggestions, but that's going to be up to them. They're surrounded by some beds where they can do flowers and herbs and what have you. And I do know a lot of the residents in Ten Town who I've personally met do life to garden. It's very therapeutic, it's very healing and it's very grounding. It's, happens to be one of my favorite things to do too. And then on the south side, the green rectangle, it's actually a lawn. Um not for pets, so this will be for people. I mean, you can come and take a nap on it, you could um have a picnic, uh do yoga, tai chi. But it's, it's a, a used kind of a green area for the residents to use as well. We're proposing um architectural string lights in there, so it'll be kind of a fun atmosphere. Um they're all shrouded, everything as far as the lighting goes is dark sky friendly and meets the code. And um I think it's kind of a, a good general description.
Okay, last slide, I think.
Okay, good. This is just a sample of the plant palette. There's our native oak on the left. We also have, the pink lined one is a native redwood. But and I wanted to say basically all the plants on the exterior of the building are California native plants. On the inside, we do have the edibles and a little bit, you know, Mediterranean palette, but all generally will meet our modified water efficient landscape ordinance. And um, and I forgot to mention, in the courtyard, I do have several planters with citrus. Good to eat, very iconic for Ojai, you can use it in the kitchen. Um but there's a sample of our bioswale plants. And I do want to mention that the um planning commission had talked about screening, us adding a plant screen. And I did add one, it's on the south side of the project. Which is actually pretty heavy, heavily vegetated, so a little bit of a challenge. But it's not a dense hedge because the fire code doesn't allow it. The new fire code, you've got to have spacing between the plants. And there was also mention about adding a vine on a fence at planning commission. Once again, it's not encouraged or depending on where that fence is, really not allowed in the fire code. So I wanted to say I listened, but I'm just responding that because of the fire code, we're not going to be doing that. There's a sample of the bike parking up on the right. Um we did take fencing that was out on the south side of the property, and now the only fencing is on the north side. Just kind of up beyond the um, the dog relief area and the, the bike parking. And that connects to the public works yard, the matte bronze finish, it's six foot high fence. And then on the bottom right is the decomposed granite that we are proposing for the um sidewalk area along Montgomery. And I think that's it.
Alright, thank you, Kathy. Next slide, please. If I could have somebody, yes, thank you.
Hi again. I'm co-founder with Dignity Moves and when we first started, we were a s- a nonprofit startup that was born out of the pandemic. And we were created to end or bring scalable solutions to end homelessness. And in terms of absolute numbers, we absolutely killed it. In a matter of a short few years, we have built five hundred units, have served over eight hundred and fifty people. At the end of this year, we would have built one thousand units. And we built so at a fraction of the cost of permanent housing and in a matter of months. Just yesterday, we handed over a site, I built a hundred and fifty units in eleven months. So from that side, in terms of absolute numbers, um for a nonprofit developer, we've built lots of units. But really, that doesn't, it's not the proudest that I'm, or it's not what I'm proud of most at Dignity Moves. What I'm proud of most is our ability to change, a spur change and change systems. Like when we first started out, we were looking at homelessness, but we've got so much educated around what homelessness is. It's very complex and we look at it as unsheltered homelessness and sheltered homelessness. And we're really focused on the unsheltered parts, that's the most visible. That's what most people are worried about businesses, general public. And when you really hone in and understand the causes of that unsheltered homelessness, it really spurs you on to bring people indoors and to do so quickly. The cost to leave people on the streets contrary to popular belief is at least two hundred and fifty dollars per person per night. It's anywhere between about seventy thousand to ninety thousand per person. And most of that is borne by the healthcare system. When I've got cough or wheeze or sprained ankle, I go to the ER room. I don't go, like if I was on a site, I would go to, you know, the nurse on site or I'd get local care. I wouldn't go to an ER room where it costs seven thousand dollars a visit. Um and then people talk about, oh well, like criminalizing homelessness. The cost to keep somebody in jail overnight is about two hundred dollars per person per night. When you're bringing people indoors to Dignity Moves communities, like the one in Ojai, we're talking about a hundred dollars per person per night. But on top of that, they get the care supportive services that they need. And there's measured outcomes where people can really start to rebuild their lives because they're coming from a place that's safe and secure. We can never get that efficacy of services when we're dealing with people on the streets. First and foremost, they need to be brought in so they're in the right mindset. And then they can stabilize and move on to become like members of the community and work in and getting the health and care they need. So um on the policy perspective, we've even brought about change at the state level. And last year, we introduced a bill SB thirteen ninety-five that really solidified interim housing as a bona fide use of state funds because the cost to society is fiscally responsible to bring people in. There's measured outcomes and it's the right thing to do. And it's also what the general public is asking, please bring people indoors. So that's what I'm proud of most. I appreciate your time on this item tonight and your support. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next slide, please. So here, now I just want to preface this with, we're not asking for you to make a determination regarding any sequo tonight. Instead, what was provided in the staff report was informational pieces in terms of the qualifying exemptions regarding uh what this proposed project uh brings to the table. And really, we're looking at infill development. This is really considered to be an infill development project. And then also, um and I believe this public resources code section uh in terms of how it acts and its actions um became effective in January of this year. So it's very brand new in terms of how it's being applied. So those are the two pieces that we're seeing as how this qua- this qualifies through uh exemptions within the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. So next steps, so what we're looking for tonight from city council to consider, and it's threefold, this is the full um readout, I'll read it out specifically and intentionally. So it is to consider the following, approve the proposed lower public works yard project site as a location for the Cabin Village project contingent upon the city entering into a development agreement, development management agreement to develop the Cabin Village project on that site and approve the design review permit. Additionally, continue the hearing on the design review permit until such time as the city manager brings back the negotiated development management agreement. And direct the city manager to negotiated development management agreement with Dignity Moves for the design and construction of the Cabin Village project on the proposed project site. Present the negotiated development management agreement, design review permit and associated sequo environmental findings and determinations to the city council for its consideration and possible final approval as a future meeting of the city council and any other necessary approvals. So with that, are there any questions from council?
And just, I, I suffer from this too. Sometimes I want to go right into the deliberation part, so we want to reserve this for any questions that are specific. Possibly we'll take a five minute break and then we'll go to some public comments and then deliberation. So questions for staff?
Yeah, I have some. Somewhere along the line, uh the question of bathrooms came up and it was explained that um there were a high percentage of people living in the units that had, either didn't have the ability or didn't have the willingness to clean up their own bathroom space. And so uh it was explained that the reason that the communal bathrooms were being designed in is because that was much more manageable, manageable for the project. Now um that was at a time when it was, we were examining a transitional uh housing program, meaning that people weren't going to be, it wasn't going to be permanent housing. But uh I'm, I'm wondering if any uh planning has gone into the idea of how uh bathroom bathrooms are going to be managed.
Sure, I can take that question. So I, I think the headline on this one is, like the design of the project, the, the population um has evolved a bit too. Uh from the, the time we started the discussion, we have had some folks exit from the program. Uh and we've really made a focus on those who are participating now are essentially, for lack of a better phrase, preparing for or trying out for the Cabin Village project. So it's a behavior based model that we operate under. And we are uh looking at folks that can make that transition from where they are now to permanent supportive housing. And that's, that's the big change that's happened since then.
So it's, there's not going to be any need for uh?
I'm not saying that there's not going to be any potential need and, and you know, there, there, you know, admittedly we'll learn a lot, probably in the first few months of, of operation, and we may have to make some modifications from what you've seen before in the cost model. Uh you may remember from the cost model that is an attachment to your agenda report, uh that there are a number of administrative services uh provided. Um and if we needed to modify that and have that borne from grant proceeds, we, we would if the need was there. But the focus primarily has been to make sure that those who'd make the transition over can handle it, that are prepared to do that. Thank you.
Have more questions, but if you want to go.
We can go back and forth.
Yeah, sure.
So I have a, a question regarding a proposal that we received for an alternative location. Um that came in the public comments uh for using the city property. Uh and I'm aware that we have a very detailed um response to that. But I wanted to, to hear if, to hear from staff. What, what are the benefits to the, to the public works, works yard as opposed to that, the city property, uh the, the campus, the city hall campus or an alternative property?
I think we first need to set the table with this one, and that is that we're operating under city council direction for the lower public works yard. We're not operating under direction to evaluate the feasibility of other locations. And that's also not one of the items on the agenda tonight. With that said, we have looked at approximately ten or eleven different locations. And it is staff's opinion, informed opinion, that this is the most suitable of all the locations that we've looked at.
Thank you.
Yes? Yeah, um there have, uh I've had a, been contacted by a number of people to ask uh if we're going to spend all this money on construction in Ojai. Can we actually use Ojai contractors, uh laborers, suppliers and all of that so that it benefits the local economy?
Mr. Cybert, you want, you want me to address this?
So as proposed, the project would go through Dignity Moves, um given their prior experience in putting on these kinds of projects successfully, including in adjacent communities. And as reflecting the state grant application by which the city and the county and Dignity Moves all jointly applied for the project. Shifting to a new RFP process to look at it potentially a different developer would trigger a whole new rejigger with the state regarding the grant process, because what was approved was a city, Dignity Moves and the county. So revisiting that, along with revisiting other site locations, is something that isn't with, within our present direction from the council. That all said, I would expect that Dignity Moves and the city would look for local contract opportunities as much as possible.
So that just brings up a question, when you said that with the grant, it's Dignity Moves, the city and the county. I haven't seen a commitment from the county, so where does? I haven't seen a commitment from the county. So where does that come in?
The county commitment was in providing staff support for the application itself and putting together the application for the grant, not in funding the project in full. And I'll ask Mr. Harvey to jump in on more county support.
Sure. And we've heard, and we do have, I can see her name on the screen right now. Ms. Kimberly Albers with us this evening via Zoom. And what we've heard before from the county and the town hall meeting and other discussions is the county primarily is coming in once this project is built. And, and once the ERF grant funds have been expended. It's the county's expectation that the city is going to use its state funds to build the project. And once those grant funds are exhausted, that's when the county is looking to come in. And if we want details on that, we could probably hear again from Ms. Kimberly Albers, who is on the line if you like.
So when did you find that? That's the first I've heard that they're willing to make a commitment.
It was during the 24th panel when they were speaking here.
And, and if I'm, actually, Ms. Albers, if I'm, if I'm correct in understanding what you said at that meeting, it was that we have to have permanent supportive housing in order to receive any other funding from the county. Is that, is that correct?
We can ask, Ms. Albers, are you able to unmute?
I am. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So yeah, just a couple of clarifications there. So I'm just going to read exactly what I said at the meeting because I think that way I don't mess it up. County staff are working closely, right, with the city of Ojai to identify funding sources to support the Cabin Village project and the future residents after the funding from the encampment resolution grant is exhausted. And what I explained was that funding to support permanent housing is generally awarded in competitive cycles that happen on an annual and biannual basis. So currently, we're still waiting for 2025 funding amounts to be determined at the federal level. County staff will assist in preparing the city to apply for these funding streams and work to make sure that those that are at the Cabin Village are connected to Medi-Cal, which will also provide housing tenancy and sustaining services and enhance care management in this project so that during the earth period, they're already linked to these services and they offset services cost to the city. The shelter cost share agreements that have been discussed previously between the cities and the county, and county would not apply to this project as this is not shelter. But permanent supportive housing dollars use these alternative funding streams such as home and community development block grants and other sources for longer term sustainability. We'll also work to connect with the housing authority so that there are potentially, if there are vouchers available, right, for the tenants at the site. So a committed partner to try and make sure that we find these, these sources that can apply to permanent supportive housing.
Thank you, Ms. Albers. Okay. Yeah. Let's see, I'll call on you next. Sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I've had this question from a number of community members. They're, they're observing that there are people, I think this is for Chief Newman, but they're observing that there's people who appear to be camping slash residing in Libby Park, particularly in and around Libby Bowl. And they were questioning whether there was any, you know, plan to move, to move those folks. And how does this potential homeless project, you know, fit into the people who aren't brought into that program?
Great question. So just because there may be housing. Well, let me back up for a minute. Like City Manager Ben Harvey said, currently, we have the individuals in the, in the Ojai tent town. And that's who this project would be for. So once, or if and when that project is up and running, that would not prevent us from using our resources to manage other individuals that might be within the city. So just because there's housing available doesn't mean it's open to anyone that is homeless within the city of Ojai. We would still have those resources available to us when we do do enforcement. And we would still have resources in terms of partnering with other organizations, private organizations to offer services to those individuals. But it by no means, no means does it mean that they would be able to receive services from this project at all, or that we would not be able to use our enforcement resources for that.
So I guess following up though, is, is there a plan to enforce the no camping restrictions on the public properties?
Absolutely. If that is the direction, and currently that is, that is what we do. And we have already done that with individuals that are, you know, not willing to accept services. We do enforce the county ordinances in terms of illegal camping and illegal storage of property.
Could I, could I piggyback on that? So the other, the other thing that needs to be mentioned is we're going to be bringing back before the City Council in possibly next month, as soon as next month, a proposed agreement with Ventura County Behavioral Health for a community services coordinator. And this is also identified in the cost model attachment. And this individual will be working not only with the population at Ojai Tent Town and then if you decide to move forward the Cabin Village project, but also greater Ojai for those individuals that are able, you know, and willing to accept services. And that will be very complimentary, we feel, for the sheriffs and their efforts. In fact, they'll work closely with the sheriff, trying to find a match for those that are willing to accept services to help them.
Thank you. Ms. Rule?
Yeah, so I'm actually going into page 1114 or 2-1. Under the recommendations, number three, I'm curious about what a development management agreement with Dignity Moves might look like. So, you know, I have, I've heard from my constituents many times over, $10 million for 30 units. How does that work? You know, and that the standard for, for, you know, affordable housing or, you know, permanent, permanent housing is about $500 per square foot. So I'm wondering, you know, in that development management agreement, you know, is there going to be transparency and accountability? And really, an understanding of how $10 million gets spent for 30 units? So I'm curious, I just want to talk about the development management agreement. And also, I think that I understand that Dignity Moves, and I love Dignity Moves. I'm just trying to get clarity, will not be indemnifying the city, which is, I won't say normal, because I don't know it's normal for nonprofit, you know, this type of housing. But normally, the city will be, would be indemnified by the builder, but will not be, Dignity Moves will not be indemnifying this city. And so I'm curious about how that development management agreement would work. And, you know, the kinds of things that would be in it. So that's my first question. What kinds of things are you going to be negotiating, basically?
So happy to cover that. And I'll start with the agreement and then I'll ask the Dignity Moves folks, Jeff, to emphasize or discuss the cost, the cost component. So the development management agreement will be the basic agreement by which the city contracts with Dignity Moves to approve and build the proposed Cabin Village project if approved by the council. It'll cover price, terms, include the requirements for the Cobb construction, the sustainable construction, have as an exhibit the site plan. Essentially, it's agreement to build Exhibit A, site plan, and Exhibit B, the elevations and architectural plans. It'll also cover timeline, it'll cover site prep, delivery timeline, construction, as noted, construction requirements. It'll also include insurance. And we haven't negotiated all of the details given awaiting direction from council. So there will be limited indemnity, details to follow. We need direction from the council to negotiate the agreement in full. I know the idea of no indemnity is floating in the community and is raised by council or rule. But we haven't yet negotiated those terms. I would expect we will have limited indemnity reflecting the, the state grant funding components. And then with that, I'll turn to Dignity Moves regarding the cost component. Thank you.
And I'd like to touch on the indemnity. We do, we do have indemnity clauses in many of our DMA agreements with cities and municipalities. And with regards to the cost, it's, we're very transparent. There's a detailed construction budget. The numbers that were put forward were by a local contractor. All our consultants have been local. And so what that 10.8 includes, it's both hard costs and soft costs, which includes all the, like the design fees, engineering fees, permit fees, FFNE. But we're very open book. And those costs, we don't hide anything. We'll present everything to the city. We'll work with the city staff. And they will be, the bids are proper estimates that will be based on the drawings as we go through the process. And they will be sourced with local contractors as far as possible.
Great, thank you. I just, I thank you for the, the idea around transparency and accountability and being able to follow the financial trail, I think is really, really important.
Absolutely.
You know, everything that, even though this is a grant from the state, everything that we spend, you know, in the long run, will, will not be there to provide services, you know, after the build. You know what I mean? So if it costs, do you understand what I'm saying? I'm saying that even though it's $12 million from the state, if we spend all $12 million, then we take on responsibility. If we spend $10 million, then we have $2 million of taxpayer money that is, you know, that we, we aren't going to be drawing on out of our, our funds. So that, that's kind of where that comes from. I did have yet, yet another question. The design review permit, is that something that the planning commission has to, has to provide? Or, because I, I was under the impression that the planning commission was completely advisory here. So I'm just wondering about that, Lucas, or Ben, or Matt?
Happy to take that question. From, from a design review standpoint, a DRP, as, as we tend to call it, typically it is handled at the planning commission level and less appealed to City Council. Because this project is on the grounds, and it's city owned, the site itself, it is, it is brought forward to this body for final determination.
So the council?
Sorry, just to, because to get back to what you had said earlier. There were comments that were received from the commission on two different opportunity levels. One in November, and then really the, the crux of, of everything that came forward was in February at that 19th, February 19th meeting. And that really provided an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the project itself. But then also for the commission to marinate some of their comments, questions, concerns, and raise those forward and then bring those forward to, to this body for final consideration. So it's a recommendate, I wouldn't say a recommendation because we didn't actually ask for a recommendation at the February 19th meeting. There's really comments that were really brought forward to this body.
So we are going to get a design review permit or we really don't need?
Yeah, this is living under the design review permit, application process.
The application process. Okay, thank you. And finally, the can of worms, you might say. The associated sequa environmental findings and determination to the City Council. So when I go to page 210, I thought we already, do we already have findings? And I heard you mention something about there were new sequa guidelines around infill housing? I, just because I don't know, I'm curious. But it seems to me that you, you pointed out all of the requirements that were necessary for a Class 32 exemption. So are we coming back with the sequa? Does that need to be reevaluated? That's my question, I guess.
Fully baked is probably the best way to, to identify that. It's really identifying the, the sequa exemptions that apply, that we believe apply to this project. And then having a fully vetted out exemption kind of determination.
If I could jump in on that, so to respond on. The staff report contains an initial assessment of the exemptions, both the Class 32 exemption for infill development projects and the new one, which is the special statutory exemption under Public Resources Code Section 21080.10 for contracts and services to assist unhoused persons, summarizing. And the, this, let me, so the staff report covers it at an initial level. The sequa findings, the formal approval, if made by the council, will come at a future meeting in which the council would adopt a resolution that would approve the development management agreement, make the sequa findings with all of the associated backup, and approve the designer view permit. And that's what's not on tonight's agenda. That would be next time. Or as the council may direct as to timing.
I just have a quick silly question. Just a really quick follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Council will be deciding if the sequa findings that is presented are to be approved or moved forward. It's a council decision, in other words, to approve the sequa findings. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, the council's approval of the project will include approving the sequa findings.
Okay, and so just a quick note is I would love to hear more about statutorily exempt pursuant section to section 21080.10 of the Public Resources Code, just because it seems to be new. So I'd, I'd like to hear on that. So that for, for me is my, my first three questions. So thank you very much for answering them. Much appreciated.
On that last question, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Yes.
On 21080.10, I'll turn that to John Fox, our outside counsel.
Okay, whatever.
I believe it's on the Zoom.
Yeah, we don't need to do it now. Just, just, I'm curious. Because we will have more infill projects and potentially it would be something for council and/or planning to really understand. That's all.
And just to clarify that, the new law is not for infill. The new law is for services to provide, services for people experiencing homelessness. The infill standard is this existing standard infill laws.
Okay.
The new law is for contracts and, and projects that provide services for persons experiencing homelessness or unhoused persons.
Okay, and we can talk about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manka?
Just real quick, what is fully baked?
Fully baked.
How did I use that phrase? Did I use it?
As in, it's the resolution that's not yet drafted.
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be the resolution that would be approved next time or considered and approved if the council so desires.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, please.
Yeah, so I just have a, just a, I just want to hear it out loud. I've had some constituents concerned about the soil quality and the toxicity of the land. And I read in the report that, that it, that it was, that no contaminants of dangerous levels were found, but that there were some contaminants that were found. Could you please speak to that a little bit?
I would turn that to the, I think we have Andy Nelson with Rincon that's on Zoom. And he can certainly speak to that. I know we provided a summary and then some details to that, to that point as well. But I think Andy is our, is our resident expert on this.
And Rincon is our professional environmental consultant firm. They completed the phase one and phase two.
Right.
Andy.
Hello, everybody. So a little bit of background on myself. I'm a professional geologist working for Rincon. I've got about 23 years of experience in the industry. Our office is in Ventura. So this, this site, we definitely take seriously. It's in our backyard. The, the whole point of what we did in our investigation at the site was to try to identify if there were any contaminants at this property. We advanced six borings, soil borings across the site to depths of five feet. And we collected samples at one feet and five feet below ground in each one of those borings. We also collected two samples from the stockpile of soil that was on site. We sent those samples off to a lab and we tested for just a variety of constituents, hydrocarbons, gasoline, diesel, oil, VOCs, PAHs, metals, pesticides, herbicides. Because there was really no known source, but we just needed to evaluate if there is anything there. What we found was in two of our samples, there were concentrations that came back that required, it's sort of a, they, they were higher than the other sample concentrations. And it sort of warranted a little bit more evaluation. So one of them was an arsenic concentration. And that was detected in the stockpile sample. And the arsenic concentration was at 13 parts per million, where most of all the other samples were in the range of two to five parts per million. There's naturally occurring arsenic in soil in Southern California. So we compared the concentrations we found on site to those naturally occurring concentrations. And it was that one concentration was one part per million above naturally occurring background concentrations. And it was that one concentration was one part per million above naturally occurring background concentrations. So to us, it's it's something that needs to be addressed. It's not necessarily a health risk from our standpoint because you have naturally occurring arsenic already in soil. The recommendation we had for that was it's in the stockpile. That stockpile is going to get removed from the site when it goes to get developed. So that's that's already been addressed. When the site gets developed, that stockpile is being removed. So the arsenic is would no longer be a concern. The second item was a concentration of lead that we detected in one of the soil samples. And lead also is naturally occurring in soil. But the concentration that we found at that, it was a five-foot deep sample. It was also higher than most of the other samples that we collected. The samples that were the rest of the site, they were in the range of, let's see, anywhere from, we were looking at ten, nine or ten parts per million up to around twenty-one parts per million. And the sample that we got at five feet was eighty-three. So it was definitely higher than the other ones. It also required a little bit more evaluation. There's different screening levels that are used when you are looking at metals and different concentrations of contaminants. One of them is for a residential use and it's the screening level that the DTSC, Department of Toxic Substance Control issued. And for a residential use, the DTSC screening level for lead is eighty parts per million. So our concentration was eighty-three, so just slightly above that residential use scenario. So what we've proposed is going back out to the site, doing some step out borings right around that one sample that we got, collecting additional samples to try to delineate the extent of lead in that area. And then based on that, our recommendation would be as they are grading the site, to excavate that soil out. So as it stands right now, there's really no health risk that we've identified. The the soil sample was at five feet. We collected a sample at one feet, so even shallower. That one foot sample was well within that normal background concentration range and it's within the same range as all the other samples. So there's no direct contact exposure risk right now. That five-foot sample, as it stands, there's no pathway for exposure. But in a residential scenario, the DTSC screening level has been exceeded. So that's why we were saying we just need to get that sample, that area where that sample was collected, excavated out and disposed of. The the other part of it that we did, so that's the sort of health risk portion of it. There's also the waste disposal. So once they start digging the soil up, you you were going to dispose of the soil and you have to properly dispose of it. So landfills require separate tests to see whether or not a concentration, any contaminant might be considered hazardous. So knowing that, we analyzed that lead sample and we analyze it for, it's called STLC and also TCLP. And it's it's basically a leachability test that the lab will run. So when a landfill accepts the soil, they will know is there potential for that contaminant to leach from the soil and say enter a nearby stream water body. So we did that test and it actually came back as California hazardous. So when that soil is disturbed, excavated out, it will be it will be managed separately from the remaining soil on site. And it'll be taken to a landfill that will accept hazardous soil. So that's sort of two different things that we were evaluating. One was the health risk. And the other part was the soil disposal options. We're going to get more information when we go back out and we do the step out borings and that's planned for next week. So we are going to be collecting more samples all around it. And that's going to get us a better idea of the volume of soil that has those high lead concentrations. And options, let's say it's just isolated to that five-foot interval that's easy enough to excavate out. It's a vacant lot right now. If it's more widespread, there's different options of dealing with it. But we are going to be talking to the DTSC. They can be an oversight agency throughout this process to get with the intent that we get the the ultimate letter from them stating no further action. The property has unrestricted land use and it's clear for development. So once we get this next round of investigation done, collect our additional samples, we'll have a better idea on the volume. And that's when we're going to go to the DTSC. They can provide oversight and give us that letter.
Just a question, when, just in the way that you're speaking right now, and I I want to go to Mr. Seber here. So we see that there's more testing that needs to occur. And we see that there's some soil sample that has to be managed. When you hear that report or when when we look at the report, is that par? Is it normal what you expect or is it extraordinary in any way? Or should we be concerned is the question?
Right, yeah. So put to put it in context.
Yeah.
So my my experiences on contaminated properties, I have a lot of experience dealing with commercial properties, industrial properties, oil fields, residential, like the the whole gamut. And I have seen a lot in gas stations, everything too. This site to me is on the very low scale of contaminated properties. I I almost wouldn't consider it contaminated property because the concentrations that we saw still, that arsenic concentration is one parts per million above background. The lead concentration is still within the range of background concentrations. It's above average, but it's still within the range. The the residential screening levels that the DTSC sets are very conservative. So they want to definitely protect human health. So they are pretty low. But metals aren't very mobile in soil. So it's not like, let's say, a gasoline release where the gasoline will impact the soil. There's vapors coming off of the soil. They can get inside a building. They can impact groundwater, then the groundwater moves offsite. Metals are are pretty immobile and there's also a pretty low risk for exposure because unless you're generating a lot of dust, unless you are digging in the soil, you're not going to get exposed to it as easily as, say, VOCs or gasoline. So to me, this is a, and this is an easy case to resolve because the site's undeveloped and a shallow excavation can remove these, the elevated concentrations. So yeah, to me, it's on sort of the lower, lower scale of contaminated. And I I almost wouldn't even call it contaminated.
Is that going, if if this, if the next set of tests finds that we do need to do some kind of remediation effort or some kind of soil, some kind of excavation as you're describing, how is that going to add a substantial cost to the overall project?
Well, so the 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 grading that takes place on the site, if I am correct, I've I've seen some of the grading plans. It looks like it's the, there's going to be cuts on site up to about five feet, six feet deep. So if those, if the excavation in the area where we had this lead concentration is going to six feet, that's going to remove all the lead just through the grading process. So it wouldn't add any extra cost. But let's say the grading in that area only goes to one or two feet, then then our recommendation is to extend that down until you get through that area of elevated lead. There will be some additional disposal costs because that little pocket of lead is considered hazardous. So that's going to have to get shipped off separately. Now, the the amount of cost, I I can give you a ballpark number, but until we get really a better handle on the volume of it, it's it will be a big range.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's see, Leslie.
Yes. Hi, um, quick question. So you said that you you got your soil sample from, you know, both kind of surface one foot, but also five feet. And that if the gray, if the excavation or the grading were to go down to, you know, if it was going to be at one foot and and you had to go down to five, then there would be, you know, extra costs. But you didn't go down to like six or seven or eight, right? So it's possible that, and would that be part of your step out process? To go deeper than five feet to figure out like how deep this actually goes?
Yep. Yeah, so we're planning on going to ten feet this next time. We want one boring in the same location as the last one that went to five feet. And so we're going to extend that down to ten feet. We're collecting samples as we go. And then one, four additional borings, one in each direction stepping out. And those are also going down to ten feet with samples collected each at each depth going down.
Okay, and so and then, you know, we will have a map of grading, basically, that we can cross reference with how deep those, you know, how deep or not the lead actually goes or the arsenic.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and the and the arsenic, again, the only one that was above the the that background.
Yeah.
Levels was in the stockpile.
Right.
And and that is planned for removal.
Right. And so are you going to have to step out from the stockpile? Are you just assuming somebody dumped this in here and the arsenic was in it and we're going to take it out and we're going to take the arsenic out with it? Is that?
Yeah, since since it's only detected in that stockpile, there's no need for additional step out samples. We'll just consider that whole stockpile to have arsenic. But the concentration of arsenic isn't considered hazardous. That's just, it's just above background, but it can be taken to any landfill that will accept soil.
Got it. And this my.
Whoops.
Makes, you know, understanding that remediation is possible and without an extreme effort, I'm assuming that is correct, that no matter, I mean, we could find something where remediation is, you know, extreme, but we're not talking about extreme remediation here, are we?
No, not at this point, not unless something more surprising comes up during our next round of soil sampling.
Do you think that there is a chance for that? I mean, would you have seen something by now or is it, you know?
Yeah, I know. Sometimes you don't want to speculate because we're just dealing with science and and the data that we have in front of us. But I I can speculate. And the thing is, there's, so we, Rincon did a phase one assessment, which is the whole historic review. You look at aerial photos, you look at building permits. You tried to find any potential sources of contamination for a property. It's historic use. If it was a gas station, then obviously there's a good potential for contamination. We didn't find anything during the phase one review.
Right.
The only thing we identified was the stockpile of soil because it was reportedly brought from different sources and we didn't know where they were brought from. So it could have any number of different things in it. So that was the one thing we identified in the phase one. When we were doing our soil sampling, the phase two, we also, I walked the site and I'm looking for sources of contamination, stained soil, drums, leaking drums, anything like that. I didn't see any of that. I did see materials that are being stored out there. So we placed the locations in areas that we felt would have the best chance of finding something.
Right.
But still no idea of a source or a release, anything like that. So the samples that we got, there's no indication that there would be any issues at the site. To me, it was a little bit of a surprise to find the lead and the arsenic. And by doing these step out borings, we'll see what they, what it comes back with. But I don't have any indication that we're going to have any higher concentration than what we've already detected.
Right. So so what I just heard was that you did not try to avoid places that might have contamination, that instead what you tried to do was to go where you thought there might be contamination in order to do your due diligence. Did I understand that correctly?
Right, yeah. So for example, there was a one hundred gallon little fuel tank that looks like it hasn't been used in a very long time. We put a boring right next to that. Because if there was any fuel in that and let's say it leaked, we're going to pick it up on our soil samples. There is other areas of the site where they're just being, it's it's a bunch of stuff that's being stored on site, terracotta tiles and things like that. I'm looking at the ground. I'm looking for any signs of contamination. And we're putting borings where we suspect maybe something was stored there, but it's been removed. But now there's no indication, but let's put a boring over there. So it's placing six different borings across the site. And I think you've seen the the square footage of that site. It's not that large. So six borings is pretty representative and you should be able to find something if there was contamination of that property.
Right. And finally, the last, my last point is, what would give me great confidence? And and I'm assuming, are are you going to go to the DTSC, DTC?
DTSC, uh huh, yeah.
For, you know, the final sign off regardless of what is found in this second sort of review or so we'll get that regardless? It's how how tricky it's going to be to get that?
Yeah, yeah, that that is definitely the intent. We want a letter from an oversight oversight agency that can review all of our reports, write comments on our reports, say that we have done the appropriate work out there and that they feel like there is no risk to human health or the environment, that the plan, if if our plan is go out there and dig it out, remove it offsite, that that's adequate and that they give us that final letter saying no further action. Because it can come from us. We can, we can provide our recommendations, but it comes with a whole lot more weight if it comes from the DTSC.
Correct. I will point out that the DTSC has dodged the Santa Susana toxic site quite well.
Yeah, that that one is a lot more complicated.
Yeah, it's a lot more complicated, I know. But but I I agree that, you know, some sort of sign off by the DTSC would be important. So thank you for that. And thank you for answering the question. Much appreciated.
Yep.
Mr. Whitman, you have a question?
Yes. I know we've had many assurances that people who become residents of Tent Town will have some connection with Ojai, but I still keep getting questions about what the criteria is and asking for an explanation of some people who have gotten up in front of city council and talked about moving here a couple of years ago, who were members of Tent Town. And I I know we have a local ordinance that puts locals first, essentially. And I I guess I'm wondering, is there a place where the community can look and see, you know, like objective criteria for being a resident? And does the city do any type of a review or, you know, confirm that they meet our criteria?
So let me, let me address this question. It's actually a two-part response. The first is, we're proposing to take advantage of Encampment Resolution Fund grant. And and that grant is made available to take an existing homeless encampment and transform it into permanent supportive housing. So if you were in the the encampment at the time that the application was made, if you were one of the residents there, then you are potentially, if you're able to, and that was, we talked about that earlier, make that transition into the Cabin Village project. Okay, doesn't necessarily, you know, so so yes, you could have been living in that encampment and maybe, you know, you lived in the encampment, but you did not necessarily have a connection to Ojai. So there are, there potentially could be folks in that situation. With that said, the vast majority of our participants are from Ojai. I think I've told this story a few times. I'm going to tell it again. We we have city hall employees who are classmates with participants in Ojai Tent Town. If we have availability within Ojai Tent Town and the population is relatively stable, it doesn't come up very often. We get vacancies usually if somebody finds housing, if somebody unfortunately has to go to skilled nursing or this doesn't happen really at all anymore, but previously it used to be if somebody was incarcerated, that that would create a vacancy. All the intake screening is done through help of Ojai. And by design, they, you know, they try to make a connection to, you know, did you, did you grow up here? Did you work here? Did you become homeless here? You know, what is the connection, connection to the Ojai Valley? But it's not, you know, something where, you know, you have to show a birth certificate that shows that you were born in Ojai or, you know, give me your high school diploma, that type of thing. It's more of a soft determination. And for the, you know, protection of those vulnerable people that we're we're dealing with, we don't open up the file for scrutiny from the public for for obvious reasons. But we rely upon help Ojai, who is making entries into the homeless, the HMIS management system based upon their findings. And when they are, when they do recommend a new participant. And when they are, when they do recommend a new participant to join OTT. And when you join OTT, OTT, Ojai Tent Town, potentially, if you are able to adhere to the behavior-based model. You could make the transition over to the Cabin Village. It's a consultation with the city. And so help of Ojai comes to us and they say we've got this, you know, person, we we recently had an elderly woman. Um who is from Ojai, who uh experienced homelessness and she is now living in OTT. Hope that answers your question.
So what happens with the people that are in Tent Town now and don't make the cut to go to Cabin Village? What do we do with those people?
Well, we're hoping that that's a very small number and we're thinking that those people that are unable to move to the Cabin Village. Are going to need extraordinary extraordinarily higher services than we were able to offer in the Cabin Village. So that might be mental health services that we just, that require much more um around-the-clock care. Medical services, you know, if you if you need skilled nursing, I think is the biggest example. We we're not. We we do not have a nurse on site um at at the, at OTT and we will not have a nurse on site at the Cabin Village Project. So you have to be somewhat relatively independent. I use that term relatively because you could certainly have mobility issues. Um you could have, you know, moderate mental health issues, you could have substance abuse issues. And that would not disqualify you from moving into um the permanent supportive housing.
So what happens in the event with somebody with mental health issues that starts to cycle spiral down or whatever? Then what, what is the plan to help them?
So we treat every single situation on a case-by-case basis and we have to evaluate what's going on and what the proceed.
Meaning help of Ojai?
The we, the we is city administration and usually that's me, uh that is our homeless coordinator. Uh that is one of our lead volunteers, um that is uh the city attorney's office sometimes. Um sometimes that's also possibly the sheriff's department, depending on what's what's gone on. Just, it really depends on the situation and we're we're really trying, what we're very aware of is that. We don't wanna exit somebody from Ojai Tent Town only for them to be a situation where somebody else in Ojai to have to. Address or or deal with. There should be some compelling, this person real, like I said, this person really needs care that we can't provide here is usually. The primary reason, or this person just absolutely refuses to um accept the behavior. Based good neighbor agreement and we've had that happen too. We've had people that just won't comply. And in what we tell them is, moving into the Cabin Village is no different than moving into an apartment complex. There are rules there too. You can't go jump in the pool at midnight and hoot and holler and yell, et cetera, right? There there are any, any landlord tenant agreement, there are rules you have to adhere to and this is no different.
But how valid would a document be, the good neighbor document, if you're dealing with somebody with mental health issues? Are they truly capable and to, you know, can be held accountable for something that they may not understand?
Sometimes no and sometimes yes, and I will do, I will tell you that we do have some participants that do struggle with some mental health challenges. That are very successfully able to adhere to the the good neighbor agreements. Part of what we've found is that there's a community that has been created in Ojai Tent Town. I think that's largely due to the work of Ames Weiss. And the St. Francis Challenge, and so people look out for each other and what I've seen is that when somebody is really having a difficult time. There's often somebody else who, you know, is in tune with this person's challenges and can help them, and that's happened a number of times.
So I have a couple of follow-up questions there. You mentioned uh there won't be a nurse uh on site. Are we contemplating that there's gonna be anybody on site?
Yes, we are, and this goes back to the cost model that's an attachment. Uh so we're contemplating and and then there, I do need to point out, there is an error that's been pointed out in the uh cost model. The cost model incorrectly states one case manager. It's actually supposed to be two case managers. So there's two case managers, uh there is a Ventura County Behavioral Health Community Services Coordinator, that's also a case manager of sorts. There's gonna be a property manager, there's going to be security, uh those are all presences that are gonna be there. Uh on a daily basis.
Like how many hours?
It's going to vary, and so what we've talked about and 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 again, I would probably, if you want some specific details. Kimberly Albers or or Jeff Gaddis are the ones who have actually created and and put these together. What they've told us, and and again, we can certainly call on them, at the front end, you have a need for more services. And 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 that mostly, mostly for the, for the optics of of the community really. For example, you might have a lot more security at the start, even though you don't necessarily need it, but maybe the the public and the community feels better. With that, we've seen that here at at OTT. We, you know, it's arguable if we really need the amount of security that we have here now. Simply because it's stabilized quite a bit, but I would maybe encourage uh if you're willing, Ms. Albers to better answer this question.
I would just add, on the panel on the twenty-fourth, we talked about these questions and one of those answers was. In the beginning phase, you may have somebody there twenty-four hours a day for a while between the staff that's called and the the help of Ojai people. And then eventually you'd have your county support, so it seems to me we we will have to evaluate as it goes on if I heard you said correctly. Yeah.
Cause somebody with mental illness, you know, you can be fine today and you can have something in, you know, midnight, one o'clock in the morning. Where they won't, you know, Tina can verify that, you know, nine times out of ten, they don't meet criteria to take them to get the help that they need. So what, what happens?
So if I could just jump in, we have that currently. We we have folks with mental illness and and so we have onsite security. Uh and we also have a community, and so we have kind of both things working together if somebody's having an issue, security.
Trained with mental, for mental health issues. I'm just saying this and I don't mean to sound snotty or whatever, but. I think I've told you that I had a brother that had mental health issues and myself and my two sisters took care of him. We had everything, you know, conservatorship, medical, legal, power of attorney, everything, you know, he wasn't unhoused. He went from me to my other sisters. And when he would cycle or do whatever, he could identify that he needed help, but there was no facility. I'm sorry, we're, but we have one county hospital for mental health issues with thirty beds.
So your, your brother might not have been a candidate for either OTT or the Cabin Village Project. I didn't know your brother in his situation. But I'll also point out that we we are planning to to have that Ventura County Behavioral Health Community Services Coordinator, who is a trained clin- clinician.
What I'm saying with my brothers, so he was one person, there was three adults caring for him with his mental health issues and it was a full-time job.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I don't know that your brother would have necessarily been somebody who could have adhered to the the good neighbor agreements in in OTT. And therefore probably wouldn't have been able to transition over to the Cabin Village Project.
Also, we're in a situation that if we, what we have lived with before this moment is they would be in Libby Park or in the river bottom.
And they might be.
Wait, wait. Yes, okay, we've been at this for a while. Five-minute break, okay, if everybody needs that, five-minute break, yes, and then we'll come back and we'll do public comments, okay?
Meeting time. Meeting time. Okay, everybody, let's sit down and get going.
Very tough.
It's so fun. Welcome back, everybody. So, let me, let me say two very short things. The first short thing is, we have about an hour and fifteen minutes of comments. So I just want to alert you to that. So, so, we have a lot of, of familiar names. So if you have said it, and said it well, saying it again, it, it's not, it doesn't make it stronger. You could say ditto, or I've, you've got me, and we've got you. We've got it, it's clear. Or say whatever you want to say, of course. So what I'm telling you is, um, you don't have to repeat yourself if you've said it already, we, we completely hear you. And the second thing I want to mention is, we, people are going to say things that you like, and you want to affirm, we get it, but please be quiet so we can move this on. And if we hear, there have been some instances of people vilifying a side that's not theirs, we're all here together, and we have differing opinions about this, and that is totally okay. So let's, let that be okay, and if we, if we do see some vilifying, we're going to ask you to not do that. Okay? Deal? All right, here we go. Sue Williamson, David Chapman, and Ruth Miller.
Well, I wasn't expecting to have to go first.
Lucky you.
Um, well, I just want to say, this has been very informative, and I'm so impressed. Everything that has been raised by the community has really been looked into and responded to very responsibly. I'm very impressed with all the work that has gone on. My question is, you know, what is the government for? In these days, it seems that government is turning into a profit-oriented business. And rather than what I feel the government is for, which is to provide services for people that need them, that's why we pay our taxes, that's why we're here. I don't think that wherever you put this project, you're not going to come up with some kind of opposition from the neighbors. This is consistently always happening. I went on AI, and I asked about if there were, if there were any validity to all the fears that, that people raise when it's near their house. And sure enough, it was very interesting, because they really, AI does a pretty good job of surveying a lot of things. And basically, what it said was that those fears are basically unfounded. And I could, I, I think I sent a letter to you guys saying all this, but, and, and someone here also pointed out all the various information about how having a project like this lowers the costs to the community, police services, and healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd also like to point out that a lot of the people already have services. You were worried about the bathrooms being cleaned. Well, um, right now, people that are in the Cabin Tent Town have people that come and help them, do their laundry, clean, help them clean up. This is part of the services that are already available to people. So, you know, the city is not going to have to be paying for all these services, they're already taken care of. This is not a legitimate reason to oppose this project. So I'd just like to say I support it, let's move on, all these questions have been answered, it's time to help these people, they've been sitting there, it's going to get hot this summer, let's get this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. David Chapman, Ruth Miller, and Dean Wigger.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for all the work you've done on this long journey. I'm representing Friends of the Cabin Village Project, and just want to say that we've conducted two petitions to support the selection of the Public Works Yard. First, we did a manual signature campaign, which we initiated through our support network and at community sites. Second, we did an online petition through change.org. To date, we have collected a total of eight hundred and eighteen signatures of support from both campaigns, two hundred and forty-six from our manual signatures efforts, and five hundred and seventy-two from change.org. These results, we feel, reflect the larger community's support for the Public Works Yard. Now, thanks go out to all of those who have supported our initiatives, our initiatives, sorry, and we just asked the Council to please vote yes on the yard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Ruth Miller, Dean Wigger, and Klaus Peter.
Good evening, I'm Ruth Miller, with the Unhoused Task Force, friend of the Cabin Village, and Tent Town onsite volunteer. I want to thank the city for its continued support for Tent Town, and for its ongoing efforts in the creation of the Cabin Village. Tent Town, while not perfect, is much better than sleeping on the street, however, it's not sustainable, and while better than the street, it's not great. The tents are cold in the winter, and as we saw yesterday, very hot in the summer. One of our older residents with fragile health said the inside of his tent hit 103 yesterday. He had to stay there because he was on medication that didn't let him get up and about. Cabin Village will provide much-needed basics for our elderly and disabled. I also want to thank Dignity Moves for their ongoing support in helping Ojai find solutions for its unhoused. Most of you don't know, but Dignity Moves was contacted by the Unhoused Task Force two years ago. They have participated and given much-needed advice every step of the way. They started, they stayed true to the effort through all of the ups and downs. Dignity Moves spent hundreds of hours helping Ojai with its objective in housing our vulnerable neighbors without receiving any monetary compensation. Their nonprofit mission is obvious, to provide housing for the least of us. There is no developer who would have stayed with the project with no contract or a surety of compensation. The city and Dignity Moves has spent the past seven months working on a plan for the Cabin Village at the City Maintenance Yard. There's been much research into other possible locations, however, the City Maintenance Yard remains the most viable location. It is underused piece of ground already owned by the city, the project won't disturb any environmentally sensitive areas, and it provides privacy to the residents, as well as the community due to the trees surrounding it, and its close proximity to services. It's time to break ground at the Maintenance Yard and properly house our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dean Wigger, Klaus Peter, and Clay Creasy. Creasy.
Well, I would like to start off by saying ditto, because I have been up here before, but I'll try to read fast. Uh, Councilmembers, I'd like to start off by commending you for all your efforts and diligent support in listening to the various arguments for and against the Cabin Village project. I feel like many of you took the time to listen to your constituents, and I'd like to personally thank each and every one of you. I hope you will take heed to the many pros and cons that have been presented to you this evening regarding the siding the Cabin Village project, and the troubled Maintenance Yard versus remaining on the city-owned Kent Hall property. In my personal opinion, as a contractor and builder with development experience, I can assure you that the challenges represented with choosing the Kent Hall property are far less difficult from a builder's perspective, and represent a vastly improved environment for the future residents of Cabin Village. In Kent Hall, the site allows for increased square footage of the individual living quarters, the proposed Maintenance Yard design of nine by twenty represents not much more than the standard minimums required for prison cell in the US, much less maintaining storage space for individual belongings. In Kent Hall, there is no risk for contaminated soil, representing the city's potential liability for future health risks and lawsuits brought on by the lead and arsenic poisoning, as has been evidenced to exist. In Kent Hall, you do not have to relocate the Maintenance Yard to somewhere else, much less encumber the residents with the close proximity to the daily operations being proposed to be maintained at Public Works Yard. In Kent Hall, you aren't challenged by a close-to-thirty-foot elevation change, and the many challenges represented by the access for fire department, and mere everyday ADA ramps to get in and out of the site. In Kent Hall, the residents are living amongst a park-like environment, experiencing nature and the real rehabilitating effects it has to offer. In Kent Hall, there is a much adequate parking, unlike the complete refusal of the current design at which Public Works, which claims that parking is exempt based on manufactured exemptions of calling this project a government facility, when we all know it is actually a large-scale, high-density residential facility that requires parking. Finally, in reference to the major disadvantages of the Public Works Yard, if you choose Public Works, you are forcing this amongst the single-family residents that exist on all sides, clearly going against all the city planning element, and the advice of certain planning commissioners who have pointed out to you the shortcomings of this project in relation to our city zoning and planning element. Comparing the future plan, um, excuse me, I'm going to skip that, getting on, uh, you have a difficult choice to make, and I think it deserves your attention, to further investigate the original intention of this ERF grant with a motion to continue planning of this project at Kent Hall. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wigger. Klaus Peter, Clay Creasy, and Darrell Ralston. Klaus Peter. Oh, yeah, great.
Hello.
I hope this will be very short. My first comment is, I hope that this will all work out. I think this would be the best outcome, if we can move forward with this, and spare us the agony of more repetitious arguments back and forth, and huge legal fees, because if we had a better council in the past, sorry to say that, we wouldn't have had those tremendous legal fees that I personally feel should definitely not be repeated in this case. Having said that, you have a formidable opponent, as several, this whole write-up that we got, and, and the response from the city council, I think that most people picked that up, but I'm just saying what I'm referring to. This was from Mr. Clay Creasy, and the speaker before, who clearly say they suggest a different location. I don't necessarily agree with this, but I think there should be a very serious look at a backup, because if these people prevail, and they might legally or otherwise, I am not convinced that there is a serious backup. You said you looked at ten or twelve locations, a serious backup would be someone saying, like, where else on City Hall that we already own, could we do this, if the people from Persimmon Hill get their way? So that's my caution. Other than that, I think, I repeat that, I hope it will all work out, and let's keep this whole process very transparent, especially where the dollars go. Thank you.
Thank you, Klaus Peter. Clay Creasy, Darrell Ralston, and Delaney Labar.
Thank you, Mayor Gilman, and the council members, and Weston, I gave a little handout, and I was instructed by Welston to tell you, Mayor Gilman, that I had done that, and makes it officially something you can look at, what I, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we've crossed that bridge. My handout has three parts to it. The first part talks about why a, a location at the City Hall lot to the west, immediate west of the Kent Hall parking lot, why that would be advantageous. Second section shows why it would be much better for Ojai taxpayers, and the third section shows why it would be much better for the Green Coalition. Let me start with the page, the first page on why it's better for Cabin Village residents. Councilwoman Lang, you asked the city manager to explain why the Cabin Village at Maintenance Yard was different, better or worse, than another location. He declined to answer that, because he said his mandate is only to talk about the Maintenance Yard. Unfortunately, he's correct, that is his mandate, so we can't expect him to go far afield. But that's not my mandate, and I can tell you why the Cabin Village at Kent Hall would be vastly superior to the Maintenance Yard. There are ten items listed there, and sake of time, I'm not going to read them all out loud, it's several hundred feet closer for residents to walk to the facilities they need to go to, pedestrian walkways are much less treacherous, parking capacity is much better, including for emergency vehicles, there's less exposure to busy streets, it's more remote from neighboring residences, there will be good access to green space, residents can potentially even get jobs doing park maintenance there, there's no worries about toxic chemicals. You have a random number that Andy Nelson, the geologist, declined to tell you how much it might cost, depending on how these extra borings turn out, but that's a, you know, a wild card here, and you would have space to expand if you wanted to. Secondly, pro forma economics are much favorable for the City Hall location, I think it would save three-point-eight million in total versus the Maintenance Yard, you can see these numbers here, why would it save that much money? No need for a new parking lot, no need to pay for elaborate ADA access, et cetera. I do have one show-and-tell that I'd like to share with you. I thought it was a typo when I saw that they were going to install six trees that had circumference, or had diameters of thirty-six inches. They assured me it was not a typo. This is how big a round, this is how big a round a thirty-six-inch diameter oak tree is, and they're going to install six of these on that lot. Does anybody here really think that's going to happen? It was confirmed to me in follow-up comments that it was not a typo. If they, if they double down on that.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Darrell Ralston, Delaney Labar, and Renee Roth.
Honorable Mayor and Council, first and foremost, thanks for your dedication and commitment, it really is valuable to our community. There's a plan to locate Cabin Village in the City Hall parking lot, and that site offers numerous advantages to the City Public Works Yard, and here's a few. There's an option to make the living units larger, and this was brought up at the, the recent Planning Commission meeting, where enlarging the units was beneficial. So that's possible at that site. The location is financially more feasible, because you won't have to purchase a property to replace the Public Works Yard, and an estimated cost of one and a half to two million. There won't be a need to remediate contaminated soil at an unknown cost, there won't be a need for a lengthy ADA ramp at another cost. And the savings, the savings may well be available to offset the annual cost of Cabin Village. The City Hall location is much safer for pedestrians, residents, and visitors, because there's adequate parking, and there will be, there will not be a need to traverse South Montgomery Street, which has a, a high-traffic pattern, and a, almost a blind curve. Residents and visitors can enjoy a park-like setting and still have seclusion if they desire at that City Hall site. So in closing, I ask that the financial considerations be paramount, and please do not award a contract to Dignity Moves without a competitive bid. It doesn't matter where grant money comes from, it's still, it's still, the public's money, and it still needs to be accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston. Delaney Labar, Renee Roth, and Mati Blacklock. Okay, thank you, Renee Roth, Mati Blacklock, and Liz Otter. Okay, thank you, Renee Roth, Mati Blacklock, and Liz Otterbein.
Good evening, members of the council. Early on, I tried to get a meeting with Mr. Harvey, and he did actually make time to meet with me, and I did say I was a big supporter of this project, and I still am a big supporter of this project, and I want to support this project fully and 100%, but I'm just not there yet. I want to thank Kathy Nolan and the architects and the expansion and all the things they've included in the project. I just do not believe this is the right site. Okay, so, first of all, I want to say that I have attended three of the World's Cafe events that the Green Coalition put on. I think, Rachel, you may have been at one of them, and the number-one priority was always to address the unhoused population in the park that was limiting public access and planning for future use. It has now been addressed with the temporary tent village that has been set up in the parking lot. So it has been contained. It is being managed. They have the buy-in process to get into the program, but again, this is not the Green Coalition's decision. This is the city council's decision based on input from the community. I've heard several people say, well, the Green Coalition doesn't want it down in the area on this side of the campus. The Green Coalition doesn't want it. What is that? This isn't the Green Coalition's decision, it's your decision, and I want you to really seriously give this site some additional thought. And the first time I did walk through this, it was with Connor Jones on a watershed walkthrough. We did it on another walkthrough with Kathy Nolan. I think I've walked through it four different times. Every time I've walked through it, you know what I said? This is where the unhoused population needs to be living. I felt it, I knew it in my heart. I can't explain why I knew it, and then I talked to Clay Creasy, I saw his plan, I saw that what he was trying to do was provide benefits to the community, to provide benefits, maybe even to Kent Hall. Maybe we could reinvest some money in Kent Hall by having some additional funding available without all the impediments of inaccessibility. It's just too inaccessible for people to get up and down. I think the ingress and egress are just horrendous. I'm a trip-and-fall person, I don't want any more trip-and-falls.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Mati Blacklock, Liz Otterbein, and Betsy Sticks.
Good evening. Very cool to see this moving along.
Try to stay focused, guys.
I brought this up last time, but I wanted to kind of add some more detail and just curious about next steps for discussion, and I also wanted to make this, everyone, while y'all are making the decision, how many people here, by show of hands?
Phone, address us.
How many people here, by show of hands, are concerned about fires for Ojai in the We have one person in front of me raise their hand.
We all are.
I believe, two, two, I think everyone might. Cement is one of, accounts for eight percent of total greenhouse gas emissions. I heard stucco being mentioned as the outside exterior surface for the building, whether this is at the proposed site or another site. Clay is an abundant local material. We, I'm sure there's a city site somewhere that we could harvest clay from. I'd be very curious to see what line item budget, and also dignity moves is doing a great job, shout out to the architects and the whole team, but imagine the vision where this location is a training ground for the future of natural building, to build resilient, fire-hardened homes in our community. Clay plaster cleans the air, naturally removes volatile organic compounds from the air, providing a safer respiratory environment for the residents, many of whom may have health conditions that could benefit from a really grounded, healthy space. Imagine there are over 2,000 high school students in Ojai, if the number I looked up was correct. Imagine bringing groups of high school students by. Instead of having contractors who are being paid to apply cement, a caustic material, we could be doing this with kids. I've been at numerous natural building workshops where kids as young as two years old are actually contributing to building these homes. I came from a tech background and left that world and came to Ojai to root in the community of people like Connor Jones and Sage Stodeman and all the amazing permaculturists and builders who are here creating a vision where we all want to live in. Many of us might not be here 100 years from now. There are clay buildings that have stood the test of time for thousands of years. We could have yearly workshops where students are coming back, learning how to maintain these buildings, we're using local material. There's a petition in L.A. that has received over 3,000 signatures of people interested in using earth and materials for rebuilding natural homes. We're working to train contractors and people to be able to help harden their homes with natural, abundant, local materials. We could all participate in a workshop, the people from Persimmon Hill, the people who are for this site could come together and collaborate on building this structure to some extent together.
Thank you, Mr. Blacklock. Remember what I was saying? Thanks, guys. Liz Otterbein, Betsy Sticks, and Bill Miley. Move the microphone, thank you.
Good evening. I've been a resident of Ojai Valley for, I think, since 1985, so that's 40 years. I've worked 17 years at the Psych Hospital in Ventura as a psychiatric nurse. First, I feel in my heart that caring for human beings is probably the most important duty that we have. Second, I've been volunteering at OTT since January, and I've met residents, I've done group with them, and I've met really smart, educated, caring human beings. Yeah, that need support. My third point, it's a little bit out of the Ventura thing, but it's, I want to point out, if people know Ventura, do you know the Ventura Inn? It's a building right in the town. I'm bringing it up because I think there's an element of fear of what those people can bring to town. Ventura Inn is right in downtown Ventura. Nobody knows. I was sending lots of patients from there, right out of crisis team, and it was right in town, and people are just being housed, and it was no known disruption. And my last point will be, maybe we could be a model in Ojai to give people dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Otterbein. Betsy Sticks, Bill Miley, and Shanti, the last name looks like Shando Sham, but Betsy, thank you.
Hey, guys, nice to see you. Thank you, council, mayor, and staff for all the hard work and due diligence that have gone into this project so far. Much appreciated. It's really important. I want to share with you two things that I've learned over the last several months while teaching yoga at Tent Town. First, I learned, or rather relearned, that we are all here together having the same human experience regardless of our DNA, family histories, choices, political parties, or bank accounts. We all experience thoughts and feelings, including sadness, anger, fear, joy, and love. We're all very resilient. We're all having an experience in a physical body, which may include, at times, low back pain? Anybody? Inflammation? Anybody? Difficulty sleeping? Anyone? Digestive issues? Anyone? Headaches, anxiety, depression, addiction, fatigue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Luckily, yoga makes us feel better and helps us remember our connection to ourselves, each other, and the planet. Second, I learned for the first time what it feels like to experience an open-hearted and healing yoga class, and then return to my cozy home with a roof, heating and cooling, hot water, a full refrigerator, and most importantly, safety, while knowing that my fellow classmates return to tents. They're camping year-round in a parking lot. Imagine that. As one resident said, everything is harder. I recommitted after each class to help the residents transition to a better situation. Clearly, our economic system is off balance when so many members of our community lack the basic needs of adequate shelter, safety, and respect. We have an opportunity tonight to make life so much better for our Tent Town residents while being a beacon of forward-thinking, compassion, and solutions to make it a better future. The population of Tent Town is stable. A large percentage of the group are senior citizens. We can do better than the Tent Town outside. Let's take care of each other and move forward. So just say yes. Thank you. And just one more moment, because I have 23 seconds. In my four years in office, I heard so many residents say they would like this eight acres to be a public park, over and over again. They would like to fulfill the destiny of the Smith-Hobson family who donated the property. They'd like Stewart Canyon returned to natural state, so that's, I think that's really huge in terms of what the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sticks. Bill Miley, Shanti, okay, Shanti then, Shanti's gone too, okay. Carol Wade, Anita Cram, Mary Forrest. Carol Wade, please. Okay. That was great.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Carol Wade, and I want to first begin by thanking you all for taking the time and the very strong and intense effort that's gone into looking at all the details of this project. I really, really do appreciate that. I also appreciate all the people who've come and all the, you know, their thoughts and their time, too. I'm here to speak in support of the Cabin Village in the city-owned lot at the Public Works Yard. Funding for the issues surrounding the unhoused populations come from local, county, state, and private sources. Responses for, are by the police, by ambulance services, by fire departments, local hospitals and jails are greatly increased with unhoused people with no permanent place to be. All of these services are more expensive to taxpayers than providing safe housing with supportive services. Harm reduction housing approaches to dealing with houselessness saves money because the cost of emergency responses, the things that I listed before, police, ambulance, fire departments, local hospitals, and jails, is greatly reduced. More importantly, basic human decency tells us to protect the most vulnerable among us who happen to make up a majority of the unhoused population. Those are seniors, veterans, and disabled people. We have the money, we have the place, we have the people to help. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Anita Cram, Mary Forrest, and Souza Francina.
I won't go through all the hours that we've put into this and all the months, but it's time. It's time to say yes and to move forward. I would like to address a few things that have been said. First of all, Kent Hall has never been tested for toxins. No one can stand up here and say that there aren't ones here because that information has not been evaluated. Kent Hall is a much more sensitive ecosystem from an oak woodland perspective, and as was previously mentioned, Stewart Canyon, this is a watershed. It's a waterway that goes from the mountains, it goes down Kenyatta, it's the creek that goes by cottages among the flowers. It's a sensitive oak woodland ecosystem and watershed. You know, there really aren't the dollars to increase the size. We already heard that tonight, that they increased as much as they could. Access will also be given from Ventura in addition to Montgomery. It's not just a Montgomery access anymore. The Natural Builders Workshop is a really good idea. I've been involved in several projects where a community came in, learned how to do natural building, and contributed to the building practice. I don't know if that's logistical with this, but it's definitely can be a community effort. And the other thing is that multiple funding sources have been mentioned, identified tonight, and it has been stated many times through this process that that funding cannot be accessed until the housing is built. So please, be compassionate. It's time, it's time. It's a much more protected site there. All the amenities can be met. Let's go forward with a yes vote tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Mary Forrest, Souza Francina, and John Boetti.
Hi, board, is that what I call you, the board? I want to, first of all, thank West and Grace both for giving me a way to get up here. I'm a resident, I guess you'd call it, of OTT, Ojai Tent Town, and I, I'm introducing myself a little bit here, and I was an RN for over 20 years in my past, and then I went back to school and got an anthropology degree, and so, there was a domestic issue after all this happened, and I left the state, and I end up in this shelter where the, I think she was a psychiatrist, not psychologist, but she said, you know, this was an order for me to get help. If you just go to the library, I know you're a nurse, just go to the library and figure out what kind of mental illness you have, come back to me and we'll put it through, and that was her solution. I didn't go back, but I did go through multiple spirals of what was going on with this system. And another, finally, maybe a year and a half, two years later, a psychologist, no, a public health psycholo, psychiatrist decided, after talking with me for five minutes, that he, that I had a major mental illness and gave me a prescription for which, as a nurse I knew, was going to mess up my brain. I couldn't believe he was going to do that because the diagnosis was incorrect. So he gave me the prescription, and it goes on from there. My point from this is that sometimes our problems are society-made, not individually-made, and that doesn't mean always the case, but it is sometimes the case that we, as a society, are causing a lot of problems. Now, that being said, you know, when I came to this, and I am so grateful, I won't go into all the background, but I'm so grateful to have this OTT, to be able to exist, but I want to bring up some things from my anthropology. Oh, okay, you're right, I see this. Okay, so let me just say this. Architecture affects how people think. It molds their thinking, and they, I'm not going to make this, there's problems with pheromones and the architecture that you have.
I'm sorry, Mary. Wait, we have to go on. Thank you, I'm sorry. Souza Francina, John Boetti, and Grace Malloy.
Good evening, Council. Okay. Am I okay? All right. So actually, this is a wonderful, potentially a very wonderful moment. I like to think that I was the first person Ruth Miller, or among the first people Ruth Miller contacted over two years ago. So I've been on board hundreds of hours to arrive at this moment. And I want to express my full support for all the wonderful, incredible, intelligent comments made prior. And I sent in a letter, I don't need to repeat what was in the letter, to express my support for the Cabin Village project in the Public Works Yard. And I would say that the overriding, Anita Cram expressed it very well, I, the main reason I would not place the project in the eight-acre campus is because providing housing for 30 or more residents simply is not compatible with the community vision for a quiet, nature-based park. We need this refuge. There have been previous attempts at placing housing in that parkland, and it was completely voted down. The community did not want it. And as far, I also went to all the meetings, not all, but most, and I went to the most recent Ojai Valley Green Coalition Workshop. And it was overwhelming repeatedly that this is a potential demonstration project for land that respects the, I feel like I'm going in and out, is my imagination, you know, we're respecting the rights of nature by bringing, by using this as precious parkland with possible a cobhouse for a caretaker. And the other thing I want to say is that I did walk the land with the representative from Persimmon Hill who wants to move the project there. And I was very open to hearing what he had to say. But present at that meeting was a professional licensed land surveyor. I have his letter, and I can share it with you. He is, was adamant that the land would be, there was too much potential disturbance of the natural native habitat in order to make it work. And then Jeff Gaddis expressed concerns about security. Once you start having to put up fences, you're disturbing the wildlife habitat. Plus, think about the light, the noise at night. Thirty people, you can't expect them, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Francina. John Buetti, Grace Malloy, and Brad Smith.
Good evening, Council and staff. I want to thank you so much for the efforts that you have put into this subject. I mean, it's remarkable how much time and effort you put, not only here, but when you're at home, in your offices. It's really appreciated, so, thank you. But first of all, I just want to say that I am in total support of this project. I have some questions, some practical questions about the buildings that interest me. I also want to just comment on the gentleman who compared these nine-by-twenty dwelling units as prison cells. If you're living out in that tent and it's 103 degrees out, being in a nine-by-twenty dwelling, which is more space than is out there now, that's heated and air-conditioned, is like home sweet home. So, I really took offense to that. But I just want to say that, looking at these, I love these buildings. It was mentioned that the buildings were going to have tile roofs. I was wondering if standing seam metal roofs were considered for this, because I think it would be cheaper, they last a long time, cheaper both in material, I believe, and in labor costs. So I would consider that. The other thing is that the common area where there is a proposed shade tree, which is great, but are there other considerations like shade structures so that those folks can enjoy being outside? As we all know, these summers are pretty difficult without shade structures available. So, and I'm interested in knowing, someone mentioned that it took like 11 months to do the last project, to build it. I'm wondering if we're using straw bale construction or cob construction, how long that would take, who the contractors are that that would be bid out to. And, yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. So thank you, and I totally support this. Please pass it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Buetti. Grace Malloy, Brad Smith, and Jane Walter.
Hi, everyone. I want to also thank you specifically for how many times you've answered the same questions over and over again. The very impressive stoic vibe you're putting off. And before I forget, I want to just piggyback off my dad, who just spoke daddy. Just to say, I think the standing seam is a genius idea because, another reason for that is the tile roof thing and this kind of addiction to mission-style architecture that's like the colonizers' way is something I think we should all reconsider a little bit before we decide that that's the vibe of Ojai. Love a standing seam. So this is a really exciting evening. You five council members have the opportunity to do something really wonderful, so innovative, and so thoroughly vetted. I'm in support of the Cabin Village at the Public Works Yard's site as detailed in tonight's meeting via all three recommendations by staff. Please proceed as quickly as possible. I listened very carefully to all the meetings this year about the Cabin Village, as well as the town hall, and read staff responses to Clay Creasy's letter. And I tried really hard to find like solid cons, just to play devil's advocate with myself, but I really couldn't. All I could find was pros for this site and a lot of the facts that have been kind of like misquoted about toxicity in the soil and things like that. I know that you all have been listening carefully and have the correct facts. Please listen most closely to all these experts that, who are unanimous in their support and approval of this project as proposed at this site. All the amazing staff hired carefully and thoughtfully by the Council here have addressed all your concerns so thoroughly. They're so excellent at this. Please trust them and move forward. All the contractors and collaborators the Council has hired and worked with feel so confident and well-researched that this project at this site will work for all members of our community. The budget's been vetted, revised, and honed. Help, Dignity Moves, the county, and many other supportive services and partners are on board. Please, council members, listen to the voices of the experts, know that they're correct, and amplify and serve the voices and needs of our community members at the highest risk who need this help the most. Approve this project tonight, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Brad Smith, and then Jane Walter.
Good evening, council members. Mayor. Thank you all for getting us here. Been a lot of work. I watched it intimately. Your staff, Mr. Seabert, good job. There's been a lot of noise about this project. What we heard tonight cut through the noise, although there's still some noise back there. I fully support the project. I fully support the maintenance yard location for this project, and I fully support Dignity Moves as being the provider of services to carry on from tonight. I urge you all to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jane Walter.
Hi, everyone. I think most of you were, or all of you were at the panel that we did a couple of weeks ago regarding this project. And when I got here an hour and a half ago or so, I think it's important to just remember that this is permanent supportive housing. We are working with vulnerable people who are unhoused, who has, has been mentioned several times tonight, are living in tents. Moving them into housing is going to change their lives. The issues that they are dealing with now will be addressed and some of it might be solved. So when I hear us talking about the like what-ifs of this happening, we know Housing First is a proven tactic to dealing with homelessness. There has to be a little bit of trust in that. What we're doing here exists and happens in other parts of this county, of this state. So I really urge you guys to keep that in mind as we go through this. And I've also been, Councilmember Whitman, you brought this up, in terms of like how are people connected to Ojai and what is that criteria? So I was asked this after the panel, too. So our program, for years at this point, in order for us to support someone with intensive case management, they have to have become homeless in Ojai. So for us, that is the bare minimum. And that looks a lot of different ways. It's not the exact same thing in how it's fielded with every individual. But I think, just because I hear it a lot, and I know it's a question that people think about a lot, I think there's this narrative that people are going to come in droves from other parts of the county or the state to move into the Cabin Village. And I just do not see that happening and that being a reality. Happy to talk more about it later, or if people have questions about that. But yeah, just want to again remind you guys again, this is like a permanent supportive housing program. There are lots of things in place to support people and just to keep that in consideration as you vote tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Walter. That's all the cards I have. Anything online?
Yes, Mary, let's move on to Zoom. First, we have Larry, followed by Mike, and then Leanna. Larry, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you very much for doing the Phase Two. Unfortunately, obviously, there are some issues. I'm just wondering, is the remediation going to be part of the cost of the construction, or is it going to be outside the cost on the city? Also, if it came back dirty, what is Plan B? Was there ever a Plan B? Has this always been the site? So, I mean, that's my question, because if it did come back dirty after all this, and it could take, I don't know, $100,000 to do the remediation, $50,000, $2 million a year, it doesn't matter. The question is, is there a Plan B? And is the Plan B the Kent Hall site? Obviously, that's where they are, and they're housed today. The other question is, in the state of California, if I remember correctly, you need, if you have 16 units or more, you need a full-time manager on-premise. I know these aren't tenants, they're residents, or however you want to call them. But would that not follow that? Don't we need a full-time manager on-site? There are more than 16 units, and that's state law for a normal apartment house, I do believe. So you would think you may want to require that as part of your expense. Maybe it's a therapist who lives there and he get, and they get rent-free, but that's their deal. Maybe that works. So, anyway, you know, I'm with Klaus. You know, where is Plan B, please? Because this has to get done. We need to move on. And everybody needs a home, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dangold.
Mayor, we'll take one more in-house. Mary Wells.
First of all, I'm very impressed with what you've done, what you've put together, the plan. I'm not in favor of the location for various reasons, and I feel like when you have people living there that, first of all, there's the soil problem that I think is a problem. But when you have people living there with disabilities and they're in wheelchairs or not able to walk well, going up and down those hills just doesn't make sense to me. You know, I know they're making a ramp, but it's still going to be an incline. And now that there's the possibility of Tent Hall being a location, the other thing that bothers me a lot, because I drive Creek Road quite a bit if I'm going to Ventura, I'm absolutely shocked at how much traffic there is coming Creek Road into Ojai now and vice versa. And when they get here, it's either Montgomery or Ventura Street. So I just feel like it's setting those people up that have disabilities, that are using walkers and wheelchairs, trying to manipulate with all that traffic is another problem. So I like the plan that you've put together, but I would really ask that you consider not using the service yard.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Dr. Williamson, I did not put your card in the right place, and I apologize for that. Please come up.
Sorry I got off on the right, wrong venue the first time. Many of the things I was going to bring up have sort of already been answered, but I would like to ask a simple question. In Ventura County and Santa Barbara County, similar cabin-city projects, have they been in single-resident areas or they, or not? As far as I know, they've not been in single-resident areas in anywhere else in the county or Santa Barbara. Does anybody know that? I don't know. We'll ask that question in a moment. There'll be a couple of questions in a little bit. Okay, anyway. And the second thing is the entrance on Montgomery is just a horrible entrance. Having driven that street day in, day out, it's a dark street, it's curvy, and to be able to access off Montgomery, you've got to put in a sidewalk all the way past the tennis courts, and you have to have lighting down there, and you've got to have the cars slow down as they turn the corner there. So I would much prefer, if we're going to use this site, to use the signal entrance, which hasn't even been suggested as an entry site. Much less traffic directly into that project as an alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have David, who submitted a card.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for your time tonight. There's been a lot of talk, obviously. I think we all want to build something to help the people in need. There were, one of the speakers came up and said, you know, there's a lot of professionals that have given you lots of information, and you should listen to them. And I think that's true. You have a planning commission, and two of those planning commission members wrote you a letter, and that letter basically said, "This is not the site for this proposal." And they gave lots of reasons. I don't need to, you have the letter, you can read it. It wasn't part of the original plan for that. That's supposed to be either a city yard, or it's supposed to be a city park, right? So they're saying this is supposed to be a park. Well, that's supposed to be a park also, it's not a city yard. So how it's becoming a housing project now, I don't know. Mayor, you and I talked on the phone a long time ago, and you asked me, you know, where we, David, where are we going to put this if we don't put it there? And I didn't have a good answer for you. But after talking to some of the other, you know, my neighbors and residents that live around here, they kind of changed my mind a little bit. And I have a location for you now. And I believe that the original site, the original grant, the original number 20, you got $12 million, you can put it right here. You can have the money to do it, make them larger if you want. The city will have better oversight of the location. The city employees that seem to be really for this project also, they can be here to manage it because it's right in their backyard also with the rest of us. It's in our backyard. I think Kent Hall site is a much better location than the site that you're currently possibly going to vote on tonight. But either way, I know you guys are all trying to make the right decision for Ojai. I think we all think we need to do something, and we should, to help the people that are in this room and that are living in tents. We definitely need to do something. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mendo.
Mayor, we'll move back to Zoom.
Yep.
Next, we have Mike, Leanna, then Stephen.
Okay.
Mike, you have the floor.
Thank you. One interesting quote from Andy Nelson, that's, I took some really good notes, I'm an excellent note-taker. He said, quote, "I almost would not consider it contaminated." Almost would not consider it contaminated. Almost would not consider it contaminated. Very interesting. And he also said, "It's on the lower scale of contaminating." So let's make sure you process those words, um, closely. Second, um, or I, I kind of think of that as almost saying like it's almost would not consider it bankruptcy or I almost would not consider it cancer. These are important words that he said. Okay, a couple, one other thing I'd like to remind you is that you guys swore an oath to uphold certain principles and the general plan. And the general plan said that all projects must not have an, an adverse effect on the general wel- welfare of the community. So keep that in mind, please. Also, keep in mind that five hundred people signed a petition respectfully, asking you to not go forward with the maintenance yard. Another five hundred people also agreed to that. So that's a thousand people that are respectfully asking you not to go forward with the maintenance yard. And then on top of that, as David just mentioned, two esteemed members of the planning commission said, and I'll quote, "The density for the site was not brought before the planning commission for review. Given the planning commission has not reviewed the density requirements of the site and the proposed develop, does not, the proposed development does not meet the character of the adjacent land uses for housing. We believe the city council should not vote in favor of the cabin village project at this location." So as you figure, as you go forward to vote, I'm not sure how you can vote yes tonight. I recommend you vote no tonight, maybe yes some other day, but definitely not tonight with everything that's been shared with you. So I respectfully ask you to proceed in that fashion and thank you for listening to these words and to David's words and everybody else on all sides of this issue. And I got forty-four seconds left and I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Leanna, followed by Stephen and then Shanti. Leanna?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, good evening. City Council, Mayor and City Administration. Thanks to all of you who have worked on the cabin village and I know you spent many late nights on this project. And I want to thank you for your decisions to provide, provide the interim support you have for the people in OTT. Our city manager and his team are to be commended for their exhaustive work culminating in the eight hundred page staff report. It's an impressive document showing their commitment to this project. We are almost at the finish line, but there are still people in our community who want to continue looking for alternate sites. Some people I've heard tonight do not realize apparently the current and proposed Kent Hall location is already surrounded by residential homes and all of those homes are closer than any are to the public works yard. Some people want to use our parkland rather than an underused maintenance yard. And some do not realize that the eight acre campus and in particular the Stewart Canyon area is an important cultural site to the Schumash. And the cost savings at the Kent Hall lot you heard from a speaker tonight are really just facts, not based on facts which are not in evidence. Some who with their faux cries of concern for the unhoused seek to further delay this project yet another seven months. And at this point, it's just noise designed to delay and kill the project. Let's get over the hurdle of the, the, the location tonight. There is no valid reason to say no to the public works yard. The city has the money, the city has a good site and the city has the plan. Show us the city has the will to say yes to this almost ideal location for this world, for this worthy project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen, followed by Shanti and then iPhone. Stephen?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, to all the council members and the staff for a wonderful job in really vetting this issue. I strongly urge that you approve tonight the proposal for the, uh, public works yard. Each month that goes on, we're not really serving the interests of the community or the homeless. Uh, I'm listening to the people of what it would, what it would be like to live in a tent in alternative as the project that's being proposed. Each day we delay, we're not doing our duty, our service to these people. The public, uh, works yard has been fully vetted. There's going to be issues with every location. And a lot of people have said tonight, on both sides, we need to do something. And what I would suggest is if we don't do anything, the practical alternative is to continue to house these people in tents. That's not what we want to do. That's not in their interest. That's not going to get them back on the road to stability. And that's the whole purpose of permanent housing here. So I would urge you to make your decision and just ask yourself this question. If you had a friend or a close relative that you couldn't care for as far as your family, uh, like Councilwoman Mang was able to do with her family, that's a great thing. That's what we all want to do. But we all know there are people out there that don't have the family support. Society has to support them. And do we want them living in a tent or do, want them living in the type of permanent housing that's being proposed, uh, you know, by the Dignity Moves Project? So I ask you to support it and support it tonight. Each day, each week, each month that goes on, we're not doing our duty to these people who deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Shanti, followed by Jean. Shanti, you have the floor.
Hi, um, Shanti and I are sharing a, a laptop right now, so this is actually Ian Campbell speaking. I just want to start by, uh, thanking, uh, the city, the city staff, all the community members, for working on this project and for, for taking this, this issue seriously. Uh, I'm in support of the project, um, uh, the cabin village project. And my main thing that I want to share is that I feel like, um, there's kind of this weird dynamic where we're always talking about community concerns and, you know, trying to, trying to hear everybody's viewpoint, but it, it feels like the kind of elephant in the room has been that the, the residents at Tent Town doesn't really seem like people actually want to hear the reality of what, what they're saying and what their needs are. And so we get these, these public comment opportunities at city council meetings where we hear from people who aren't residents of Tent Town and how they feel about the project. But what matters to me most is, is that their agency and their needs, um, are respected and uplifted the most because anytime you have a project like this, you know, that is for somebody else, you got to talk to those people, right? So I would just recommend that, you know, it seems like the city council is the, the, um, deciding authority should perhaps have a, have a, a meeting, a forum with the Tent Town residents. And it seems like maybe some of these, um, ideas and generalizations might get resolved by, by talking to the people themselves. I know the city staff already works with, with the residents, so that's, that already happened, so thank you. Yeah, just, just wanted to share my support with that. Oh, and then another thing, um, that I just want to prioritize is just, yeah, the safety of the site. It seems like the appropriate sampling is being done of the soils and that. You guys will take into consideration how the grading will impact these materials, this, these metals. But yeah, other than that, full support.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Jean. Jean, you may unmute.
Okay, um, yeah, good, good evening. Uh, my name's Jean Sharaga. I have, I totally support having a cabin village project. But I think that the, that the project proposed by Mr. Creasy at, at the Kent Hall location, I'm not going to repeat things in it, you have copies of it. He's met with every member of the city council about it in the past, so I, I know you're familiar with it. But I want to hit on two points. One point is, I don't think it's good for the dignity of the residents that are going to be living at the cabin village location. If the city council decides to, you, to approve having it next to the, in the old maintenance yard, next to the remaining maintenance yard, that's not a dignified place to live. And I don't know if anybody has talked to the, you know, current residents or future residents about that. It's going to be noisy and just, you know, having that type of equipment, uh, and the noise and everything else. When you have a choice of being actually much closer in a more natural environment, uh, near Kent Hall, that's a major consideration. The second thing, and I have a background as a mediator for the, uh, Central District, uh, US District Court, as a ADA mediator. And one of the issues I, 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 I found from Mr. Creasy's proposal of not having to deal with is a three hundred plus foot ramp. Yeah, I think it would have to be about three hundred twenty-seven feet. Is that something that people who have disabilities, wheelchair bound people, uh, people who, you know, uh, need to have a, 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 a ramp because of the slow problems that they wouldn't have at Kent Hall? Why would they, and this is going to have to be bending and moving around. It's not going to just be a, a three hundred foot, uh, straight ramp. It's got to, it, it won't fit in, in that location that way. So you, you have to actually put people through this process who are already disabled of going through in a kind of a circular or rectangular move of, of a football field, of moving just to get to the, you know, to the sidewalk on Ventura Street. You don't have to do that if you have it at Kent Hall. And I think these are serious considerations that affect the residents, the future residents that have been overlooked. And I think that is a reason not to approve tonight the location, uh, at, at, at the maintenance yard. It, it's just crystal clear to me, that's not good for the people who are going to live there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our last raised hand we have is from our user logged in as iPhone. You have the ability to unmute now and you have the floor.
Hi. This is Marcy.
Hello.
Anyway, I want to say, with regard to everyone who has supported Cabin Village being located in the public works yard, ditto, 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 ditto. I could go on for three minutes saying my ditto. But what I want to, what I want to mention is, uh, this, uh, idea that's floating around that was created by a Mr. Creasy, resident of First Simon Hill. I just feel that there's been a lot of insincerity floating around that plan. The plan, we've seen how long it's taken to vet and draw out and think about the plan for the public works yard. To really vet his plan would take at least another seven or eight or nine months, which in effect would delay the project and in effect kill the project because the money needs to be spent by then. So I think the insincerity is that all of these people speaking out against the public works yard pay lip service to they want to provide proper housing for OTT people. But really, they just want to kill it in its entirety. And rather than saying that, they come up with crazy reasons. I think, uh, yeah, the Green Coalition doesn't control what the city does with its land. But I think what it demonstrated to me, and I went to all the World Cafes, is that there's a resounding number of people in Ojai that want to use that land for, for a park space, for a natural wonderland really, and, uh, preserve Stewart Canyon and all of that. You can't put housing in there. That's was attempted before and it was shot down. People came out in droves, no, we want to preserve this land and enjoy it as parkland. If you put houses scattered in all around it, it basically will privatize all of that land. So anyway, I just think that, um, uh, there's really only one way to go on this and that's to move forward with what's been vetted, with what's been worked on, with what we've talked about for months and months and months and months, and go forward with the public works yard and the cabin village as created and, and, uh, put forth by, uh, Dignity Moves. I think it's something that we will all be proud of and we can all continue to enjoy all of that wonderful land, all of that na- natural raw land around, uh, Kent Hall and the animals too, uh, that live there. It's their home too, and, uh, I don't know what would happen if it was all torn up. Anyway, um, thank you for your time and do the right thing.
Thank you.
That concludes our Zoom.
Okay. Um, I just had a couple of questions from the, the comments and then I would love to hear from my colleagues. So this is, I guess this would be for, if, if it comes, if the testing comes back that it's exorbitant to try to mitigate the site, what would, what would happen? What would be the next steps? You would come to us and say, the cost is going to be too high or something like that or what would it be?
Uh, cost could be one piece. Uh, the extent, extending out beyond the four boring locations that Andy had, had identified could also be another piece to that puzzle. Uh, when we had, had started talking through some of these different scenarios, there's just, there's more potential scenarios than the two that were just discussed. Cause there's a lot of different ways in which to address it. And not only that, but there's a department above us that we would definitely need to vet some of that out, um, ask for different clarifications on how we're looking to address this as well. It's kind of like, hey, here's our playbook. Uh, Department, what do you, what do you think? Does this make, does this make sense, um, start to finish? Do we need to, do we need something, uh, to, to, that needs to be ironed out even further? So they're kind of, they're kind of a resource for us as we, as we work through this as well. I know Andy was talking through, oh, this is what we would do. But I do think that there, there's a need and an understanding that, that there's, there's another party that needs to be, um, brought in to help vet this.
And then I asked you this question a couple of days ago. And I said that it's easy on a project where a lot of work has already been done on the project to continue on with the project. Sometimes it's called, um, inertia bias. And I asked you sort of point blank, okay, we've spent time and energy, a lot of resources on this site. Are you confident that if we were to proceed with your expert opinion, we're not having inertia bias? You have looked at some of those other sites to the extent that they came before you. This is the clear choice from your view?
Yeah, I hadn't heard the inertia bias before, so you had to explain it to me. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
So here's, here's the, kind of the, it's kind of how I responded to, to the question you brought forward a couple of days ago. Um, this isn't the only, this isn't the first site that we've reviewed. This is the tenth site that we reviewed and, and taken kind of a walkthrough and had conversations either with the county or other, other, um, private potential sellers of properties. And not only that, but we brought, um, expert community members, real estate, um, community members who understand, uh, the different sites that are out there, given the parameters that we had talked through. So it wasn't that this lived within a vacuum of this is the site, this is what we're moving forward with. There was a lot of considerations and even in the staff report, it identifies kind of the three different pillars that we used in evaluating, um, each of these sites. And I will admit, there were ones that we thought were the winners and they just weren't. So we had to move on to a different site.
And
From an inertia standpoint, the financial piece, this is what I said, uh, two days ago and I still stand by it. It's really up to this body to determine that. I mean, obviously staff will advise if, if the number seems high, like, oh geez, there's a technical report coming forward that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, oof, that doesn't feel right. Let's take a closer look at that. We haven't seen that with any of the reports. They've all been within reason and the experience that I've had, uh, working with the different agencies at this level.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts and then I would like to hear from my colleagues. Um, one is that we, we keep repeating ourselves in some ways because we keep having forums like this. So I realize some of that's necessary because not everybody's present for them all. But one is that there are many cities in Ventura County who are receiving these kinds of grants. So we're not alone in that. And so I hope that at least works on some of the concern about people coming here if we build this thing. The second is that I do believe that there are some differences in the view of saying, well, I don't like this site, but I want another site or I actually don't want this in Ojai at all. And that's fine, that's a completely fine view. But if we say not this site, but the real intention is not in Ojai at all, I would hope that we would just be clear about that, which is again, completely fine view. And some of, some of the audience has shared that view with me in the past and I think that's completely good. But just to be clear, not to move it a little further on. And then I think the other thing is, it, it seems like we're having a conversation, but it's not correct to say, oh, we have this site at South Signal or we have this site over here in the park. That's not really what we're talking about tonight because we, we do not this site over here in the park. That's not really what we're talking about tonight because we, we do not have that, as was pointed out. It has not been vetted. We have not heard the community concern. We don't actually know what the cost is. We don't have the grading. We don't have the expert testimony and so on. So to think, oh, there's a site that looks better. Any site would look better because we haven't heard the fight from the neighborhood yet. So it all, every site would look better in one regard. So I just wanna say, we have to be really clear to say, does this seem, in my view, does this seem reasonable that it meets our concerns, that it accomplishes what we're intending? And and not, and if we were to look at other sites, we would have to be asking the question, in what way does it demonstrate enough to be better, to be worth even the possibility? But that's not, well, we're not looking at two sites, even though it appears that we sort of are in the moment. That's my view. Please, go.
Okay, um, so I, I have, we've been talking about this for a really long time. I've met with people from all different perspectives, including the one that you mentioned of not, let's not have it here at all, or let's send the money back. And so I have come to a very well thought out, well researched, well experienced point of view on this, on this subject and perspective. And that is that I am in support of the Public Works Yard. And there are a couple of things that after spending the last several days rewatching and rewatching the planning commission meetings, just to make sure I was catching every detail and reading most of the eight hundred pages in the report, what, a few thi- a few points that really stood out to me that tip, were the tipping point. The architects and and the engineer and the landscape designer have really considered every angle. And they've considered the sound, they've considered the safety, they've considered the ADA accommodations. They've actually even given a little bit more space. This, this is a, this is really a uh, a a a conscious project on all levels. And even having a trauma informed perspective where there's a community courtyard, so that anyone who's in a neigh- in a neighboring, uh, who's in a house adjacent to this property is probably not even gonna see your neighbors because they're gonna be in the courtyard. And if you've ever lived in a communal setting, a dorm in college, um, you know that you hang out in those insular spaces. You hang out with your people. And I think there is nothing better for someone who's going through the kind of hard, hard times that the people in, that our residents, that our neighbors in these tents have be- have been going through. There's nothing more resourceful than knowing that you can walk out of your house and you can be with a friend. And you can share a meal together. And maybe that meal is being brought by a volunteer, or maybe that meal is something that you picked up at Rainbow Bridge and brought back. But it's yours. It's your home. And and I, you know, I've been been asked, and so, and so number one, the design considers the neighbors. It considers the residents, it considers the neighbors. We are getting more soil testing. I am sure that we will have reports coming back to us in the future about that. Um, to the point that was raised here, we don't know about the feasibility of this property. We do know that this is a natural, that there are a lot of cons to the Kent Hall property. Not as many cons to the public workyards, workyard property. We have looked at properties in the county. We've looked at properties all over the city. This is the best option that we have. And one other thing is that I've been asked, what would, how would you feel if this was in your backyard? What the, what most people don't know is that I, I've spent a lot of time with the residents, serving meals, volunteering. And the way I see this Cabin Village project is that this isn't, uh, this is a permanent shelter. But really, it's sort of like living next to a, a really nice uh, stylish apartment building. And so I've thought a lot, I've lived in some places in West Hollywood. I've lived in, you know, I I know what it's like to live in a place where you don't feel safe. And being next to this project as it's designed, according to the specifications that we've seen, I think it would actually add to the neighborhood because everyone here is so gracious. And I realize that that we're talking about a model where people are probably gonna be transitioning out, or they're, you know, that that maybe the the same people won't be here forever. But the people who are here now, they have a community, and because of the agreements that they make, they're, they're conscious in how they interact with the neighbors and how they interact with our city staff and how they interact with one another. They really care for one another. So, um, I would put a motion to the table, but I'm gonna let my colleagues speak.
Ms. Roll.
Um, yeah, so for me, it's not if, but there is a sense of where. Um, I have been listening and reading and thinking. Um, and, you know, we did not ever look at City Hall. Um, we looked at very, we looked at other places around town. We didn't look at other places around town because some people didn't wanna look at them. Um, but we never really looked at the City Hall campus. Um, but I do understand that, you know, we would start from ground zero. Um, if we were to, you know, if we were to consider it, um, for me, you know, there's pros and cons on both sides. The biggest cons to the maintenance yard um, is certainly at, is the accessibility for, you know, those who are, you know, mobility challenged. It is three hundred feet of a winding space to get in and to get out. And and when we talk about having fifty percent of that population being, you know, sixty or older, that seems to me to be an incredible barrier. Um, as one who has been limping for the last six, six weeks, um, I can imagine how difficult that is going to be as well as having the steep grade. Um, and, you know, the toxicity, I think the toxicity will probably work itself out, but I think it will take a while. Um, if it were really, if I were really considering it, I would think that, you know, being able to potentially, and and I'm interested in what the other council members would be, is having a very clear Plan B and and investigating uh, the City Hall campus. Um, there's, there's definitely, I definitely have problems with it. Um, oh dear, I just came up major on my screen. Um, so, you know, one thing, of course, uh, the city manager has said that, you know, we have to spend fifty percent of the anticipated Cabin Village project development costs. You know, approximately four point five million, um, by June, by the end of June, twenty twenty five. Um, you know, for me, all the design that's been done, uh, could almost translate to the space on the City Hall campus. In other words, it wouldn't be redesigning this, the, the, it wouldn't be redesigning the architecture, certainly would be landscaping. Um, but if we could save two million dollars and give a million dollars to, you know, site improvement on the middle, you know, the, the, uh, Middle Stewart Canyon, is that's, is that a trade off that we would make? Um, maybe, maybe not. Um, but uh, so, so I just see the pros and the cons kind of weighing, you know, equally weighing. But then when I think about it, if I had a mobility challenged parent or grandparent, where would I want them to be? Um, but then again, you know, if I had some wild animals, you know, and I wanted them to, to really have space, where, where would I want them to be? So I'm trying to figure out how I, how I think this will, this will go. I think that there's a lot of infrastructure costs to the maintenance yard. Um, that was always, you know, I, that was always my third choice on where to put this. Um, and I, and I remain, uh, I remain conflicted about it, but as I've said, it's not an if we do this. It's just simply a where we do this. So I am interested in, you know, my other council members' uh, perspectives, and and I hear Council Member Langs, certain, certainly her perspective. Um, and I would ask, maybe we do, you know, if we, if we can't, if if City Hall is not the first choice, we at least use it as um, a backup and start doing some research on it. It might, we don't know how long it's gonna take to get the maintenance yard in some sort of state or how long it's going to take to, you know, build the ADA dr- you know, the driveway and the parking and and those kinds of things. There are some, there are some real time sucks. Meaning that it takes a lot of time, not that it sucks, but there's some real time elements to building out the uh, building out the maintenance yard. And a- as I said, everything that Dignity Moves said about, you know, that space is not specific to that space. It's really specific to the communal living and I think could be transferred over to the City Hall campus. Um, and, you know, what would that actually do and be for the residents? Um, you know, we have not spoken to them. It's a much more gradual change. And if you're talking about, you know, very uh, trauma informed situations, you know, the the smallest change is always the best. Um, so pros and cons are conflicted. I will, I will listen to my other council members and once again reiterate, for me, it's not an if, but a where.
Ms. Roll, if I could ask, um, just cause the timer went up, but can I just ask your, that's okay. Let me ask your question of staff, though, is could, could another location, let's say it happens to be here, um, can a Plan B at least preliminarily be looked at without too much of a dollar commitment?
Well, I I I think we first need some clarification. When you, when you say here, what does that mean? Does that mean the Kent Hall location that was on the application? Or are you talking about Mr. Creasy's proposal by the, by the garden? Which one is it?
I hear you, I hear you. That's a, that's a clarifying question. Well.
I mean, that's what I would think.
You see the difficulty, right, is the, the direction would be needed. Um.
And I would, and I would tell you that we would treat it the same way we have treated the maintenance yard. We, you know, we would start with all the questions, and then we would, you know, commission the studies, and I don't know what would come back. I do know that, you know, that this would probably, this location, if we're talking about, I'm just gonna call it the demonstration garden area. There would probably be a Chumash tribe component that we did not have at the maintenance yard that I would need to consult. I know that, you know, that's, that's a consideration. But but there, anyway, I, there's no short answer, and 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 when you talk about the feasibility study, there is no such thing as just do a generic feasibility study. You know, in the, in the environmental consulting world, it's, it's various compartmentalized studies to determine impact.
Understood.
Potential impact and how you might mitigate them. And Mr. Cyber, do you wanna jump in there?
You know, when we started this process, we started it in November, October is when we started vetting uh, these technical studies, and we finished that in February. So. September, okay, so it was even sort of, so September to February, it's a five month, and I, I will admit, um, myself and Brian working on that, it was, it was around the clock, aside from the other things that we were working on as well. So it wasn't that, oh, we're just constantly having, it's, it is five months. It's really, it's, it's fair to assume that's the timeline. Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate both of, both of those comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
So for the sake of time, Leslie, I agree with practically everything you said, so I'll save all of that. So whatever she said, ditto. The only, um, I, um, one of the other things, uh, you know, I feel like we've um, lacked operational and building expenses with budgets. I know that, um, Mr. Harvey has, you know, produced, or I guess it was, um, I can't think of his name right, Alameda, and that to me wasn't a budget. So I haven't seen anything, you know, um, I've asked, like, how much have we spent? And my response, or my reply was always, well, you know, a lot of it's reimbursable. Well, it's like, okay, so let's just have another column. So it's like, you know, if this wasn't so big, I was gonna spend this weekend going over the last year of warrants to see how much we've spent this far with Tent Town and how much has gone, that type of thing. And then my other thing is just, you know, the, the email from the two city planners. Um, you know, that, that's big. This is their job. They were given this task, and this is what they come back with. And I, I believe in what they're saying.
Could I just ask a question? What, so it was a question simply, what, what's the total amount spent on OTT thus far?
How much is, have, have we spent in, you know?
Just accounting, yeah. Uh, but I guess what we tried to provide in the attachment um, to the agenda report was, you know, a, a cost model, which is akin, is kind of an apples to apples type thing. Here, here's the cost model for what we believe it's gonna cost to run the Cabin Village. Here's the cost model for what we think, you know, it's going to cost to continue to run Ojai Tent Town. You, you would have some additional costs that we've spent during the duration, you know, just buying the tents. You know, hiring this person, hiring that person. We could, we could provide you with that number. I don't know how helpful it would be to you in your decision making process.
Well, I would just like a number, and I would like to see, you know, where the funding, so in two years when we don't have any money, if the grant is all spent, where is that money gonna come from without saying we're gonna apply for grants and philanthropy, philanthropy? It's like, I, that doesn't, you know, I think this is a great project, totally for it. I know the community is, but I want it to be successful. I don't wanna take the twelve million dollars for something that we can only have for two years. And then when we don't have money, you know, do we open up the books, as I, I've said before, to the community to say, okay, where do you wanna scrape off? It's a million dollars to run. Do you wanna give up on pavement? Do you wanna, you know, cut back on the Sheriff's Department? Where do you wanna do this to make it continue? Because, you know, yeah.
So, yeah, and I just, I think, I think some of these things are answered in this cost model attachment, you know. For instance, we're, we're estimating it's around six hundred thousand dollars a year to run the Cabin Village project. We're estimating that, you know, that at least, uh, for the first few years, that's offset by revenue that matches, matches that. Because the proposal is that you're setting aside two million dollars in, in operating subsidies, right? That's, that's, that's how, you know, a big chunk of.
There's two million dollars left after.
Well, and and that's what we believe will be, and that's, that's from looking at the costs of, of the construction. We're believing you're gonna have two million dollars left over that you can carve out for future operating subsidies. What you've heard from the county representative is, you know, once this is built, you know, once you have permanent supportive housing, that's when we can come in, and that's when we can try to find ways to, to help you offset that. But they, you know, they of course deal with their own funding challenges too. You also heard that, you know, they don't know where the federal government is.
Exactly.
But, so that's, but, but with everything that we do, we approve a budget on a yearly basis. And, you know, we have to respond to whatever challenges we are dealing with in June when we adopt the budget, and we are nimble. And we make changes accordingly. And that's why you have, you know, you have almost twenty million dollars set aside in, in unprogrammed reserves right now. I'm not saying you go spend and get crazy, but that's, that's the type of financial operation we run, so that if you do run into difficulties, you have wherewithal to pull and to fund that.
If I might say, the, the question that you're asking, Ms. Mang, is it, that's still irrespective of the location, that those budget questions would be either location.
Either, absolutely.
Or any location, but then the other point is, we're spending money right now, having these folks be right here. So there is an expense that we have taken on. So unless one word to say, let's just have everybody leave, which nobody wants to say that. So then there's already, I mean, if, if we want to trust this budget, then money is being spent right now.
Understand.
No, I know you do.
You know.
All right, so, uh, I, I kinda feel like the, the tail has been wagging the dog on this project for quite a long time. Um, hi- historically, we started out with a, a large homeless population in Libby Park. Uh, about the time that, um, I was elected in twenty, late twenty twenty two, they migrated to the City Hall. to the City Hall campus. Um, and they were in the riverbed and anywhere and everywhere, and so we um supported an idea to bring them out of the riverbed and onto the parking lot. Um, and then uh the idea of grant, a grant was available. And uh, you know, we'd been talking about the idea that we needed uh temporary housing, a roof over the head, so that we could get services in um to, to identify those federal, state, and nonprofit programs where uh people could be placed. And um I think the community was very much in support of doing all of that. But somewhere along the line of, you know, approve, uh, uh, applying for a grant, I only kind of really understood recently that um a condition of that grant was that we provide permanent supportive housing. And uh I think the reason the county has denied us at, at every step is because the county does not provide permanent supportive housing. They have zero permanent supportive housing projects that are operated by this county with county funds. And um what, the conversation we've never had is what type of a program is right for Ojai? Because this is a state-generated type of program, they say you gotta do it this way, and, you know, so you gotta do it that way, but, but we've never talked about the alternative ways of addressing homelessness. And I, I think our most intelligent, you know, conversation and approach to this, but we haven't really, you know, gone there, is, well, how much can we afford reasonably? You look at our budget, you look at our, you know, income, where, how we would fund uh our share of costs, and uh, and then once you figure that number out, how do we best use that amount of money um to get the best impact on addressing homelessness? And I don't think we're taking that approach. We're, we're, we're just, we're just marching down this uh path that the state has given us. Um, I, so the housing-first model and the um permanent supportive housing, I am certain is absolutely the best way to take care of an individual, you know, or in our case, a group of thirty people. But I think our problem is a lot bigger than thirty people, and we're, we're shooting all our resources at this one thirty-person project. And I would love to be able to say, hey, I helped five hundred people who were on the verge of losing their homes um to stay here. Uh, and so I'm much more interested in what was discussed earlier tonight, that we would uh, you know, that we would do rental assistance. Now, I, I mean, the, the details of that are, are uh, you know, would be important, but I'm very concerned that um we're counting on federal funding, and I don't think anybody who counts on federal funding today is making a smart decision. State funding is gonna be impacted by federal funding, and so what state funding is available, I don't know. And nonprofits, I mean, people are not gonna jump up to, you know, to give us money after we've taken on this plan. The, the people who donate money are going to be, you know, donating money where there is no provider, and there needs to be a provider. We're gonna step up and say, hey, we're the provider now, we're taking care of all these people. I don't expect to get any uh, you know, you know, financial support out of that. It's gonna, it's gonna be our substantial financial burden, and I don't think we've figured out, you know, how we help the most people.
If, if I can reply to you, it, it seems to me that the, and I was sitting in the audience when this all happened, um, it was, I believe it was between our city managers where, and Carl, I think, misspoke about what the intention of the grant was. The grant always said permanent supportive housing. So to think that it was something and then somehow it switched was, it seems like a misunderstanding, not a, a switch, just so we're clear about that.
We didn't see the grant until a long, long after the, the grant was applied for, and, and it's not because we didn't ask to see the grant.
Okay, well, in any case, um, the second point, though, is that I would suggest that when you say, well, let's work on rental assistance, I very much want to do that as well, but I'm not seeing this as an either-or decision, especially because the rental assistance will be with, from our general fund, that will decide what to do, and this is not from our general fund, um, at least for this first period of time, and we see what the cost would be going forward, so the either-or argument doesn't seem correct to me. It would be more like saying, how does this become one component in our large plan of housing? That's how I, I see this piece personally, but anyway.
Yeah, just a couple of quick points, and I'll finish.
Yep.
Um, I think we have seen uh a program that found rural property and uh was, did not enter, you know, did not disrupt the neighbors in the Mesa project. And I think that if we had that vision in mind and we could find that type of property, I think that'd be a much better uh, uh way to approach this. Uh, I do not, it, it, it really kind of, you know, disturbs me to my core to think that we can say, this is okay in this neighborhood, but it's not okay in that neighborhood. And I don't like hearing neighbors pitted against each, you know, neighborhoods pitted against each other, saying, it's okay for you to have it, but it's not okay for us to have it.
Just to say, the Mesa model might have a fifty percent philanthropy component, so if you're, if you want to make a budget case, the budget's not there, and they, they spent three years getting it together.
Yeah, I'm, look, so, you know, before, uh, you know, before two years ago, the money that we spent on homelessness was limited to what we did to support the Grange Hall. And so uh I'm totally supportive of the idea that we need to make a substantial investment in addressing the homelessness issue, but I think we're, you know, we're, we're, we've been shot out of a cannon down a path without really spending time talking to the community about what they're really comfortable about doing, and, you know, so the county has decided that they're not going to be in the, in the housing uh business.
Well, just, let's, let's do conclusion.
And I don't think we should be in the housing business either.
No, understood. Yes, please, go.
So I just want to respond to, to uh, to uh Councilmember Whitman's um, uh, statements about the, about the either or, about uh either doing rent, like helping with rental assistance and, and this grant funding, and the grant was part of the state's encampment grant. The state had a goal, Newsom's administration had a goal of helping cities to eliminate encampments, and this was all because of the Supreme Court ruling um that uh that limited cities. So, so this funding is, this funding is a once, it's like a once, maybe in a lifetime or once in a very long time amount of funding that's here. And so I think the rush to, or it was a rush, it felt like a rush to do the grant, to write the grant, is because we had a real need to find an alternative for the, the camping that was happening all over city properties, that wasn't the tiny, the tent town that we have. There were safety risks, there were, you know, fire hazards, there were health uh, uh consequences, so this, this process sped up because it was responding to a need. And, and so I, I look at this grant funding, we couldn't spend it on rental assistance. This grant funding is specifically to help shelter unsheltered people, and we will have to figure out as a city, how do we do other types of initiatives that help the overall issue of homelessness? And I, and I, and I think we're all committed to looking at that, help of Ojai is doing that, they're boots on the ground, the county is doing that, we have the continuum of care, and so there are, that's a different pool of resources, and a different pool of resources that we're gonna have to come up with, but this is what we have for right now, and what I'm hearing from our staff and from Dignity Moves is that if we delay, if we delay this project, there's a chance that it's not gonna happen, and we can't give the money back. I mean, we can give the money back, but then we've already spent the money. So, so to me, I, 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 I just, I, I think it's, I think it would be, I think it, it would be um, I think it would be a, a, a good idea to, to move forward with this.
I feel like we've talked, um, you, you want to entertain the motion you were considering?
Yes, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to uh, to approve this-
It's a language I'm peeling.
Thank you. Approve, approve the, and I'm, I'm, I'm uh, okay, so I'll make a, a motion to approve the Lower Public Works Yard as a project site, uh, to continue with the design review permit, and to direct the city manager to negotiate a development management agreement with Dignity Moves.
Second.
Um, can, can I ask a, just a friendly amendment, and it might not be that it's possible?
Yep.
Um, I, I still, if there were the need for a Plan B, if something were to happen, is there a way for us to put in the queue the City Hall campus, or is that just not even possible? Um, just, I, I, I guess I'm not asking for an active uh Plan B where we have two things going on simultaneously, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there is the appetite for that and if there is a way to do that. Um, so.
Ms. Harvey?
So I, I would say that I don't see a, a, a clear trigger point that would, that would, you know, cause the Plan B right now, that's my, that's my issue. I mean, I, we're, we're certainly planning on keeping council abreast of what goes with, you know, the, the soil testing, and, and we're, and we're gonna expedite that um depending on direction, that's, already discussions have already happened with Rincon Consulting to that end, they're ready to go, they understand the constraints that we're under. Uh, but I, I, what I don't have is, you know, if, I don't have an if-then type, right?
I, I, I understand, and I think it's really possible that, you know, if something were to blow up, not literally-
Yeah, right.
Methane coming out of the ground, but um that we could come back to council.
I feel, yeah, I feel, let me just jump in really quick.
Who's doing that?
Go ahead.
I feel very comfortable with our community development director, who's done a number, he's been involved with a number of different site studies and reviews, he has a good sense of, you know, what's, what's a concern and what's not a concern, but I know you want to say something as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have a collective center of experience in assessing site-specific situations, so we'll be able to apply that professional knowledge to come back to council if something metaphorically blows up. The second point I'll note is that the motion, if approved, moves it forward, but is not the final action. We will not come back to council until we have that additional information from Rincon, which they're already ready to fast-track forward, so you'll have that information before the final vote.
Great, thank you. I, I, I see, you know, a pathway if something drastic were to happen, so thank you.
Thanks for that reminder. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second that's clear, Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Motion by Mayor Protem Lang with a second by Mayor Gilman to approve as recommended. Roll call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
No.
Councilmember Mang.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Count, Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, man. That was a long item.
And we don't have another one?
Nope, we're all done. Um. Without anything else, we will adjourn. Oh, wait, what do we need to do? Sorry, hold on one second. Oh, is there, is there a, is there a manager report?
No.
Any councilmember reports?
No.
No? Nothing to report?
I'm gonna leave some friends, but.
Um, and then I, I'm gonna assume future agenda items will continue on our, on our goal-setting. Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
By Councilmember Rule.
Thank you, Councilmember Rule.
Councilmember Rule.
Thank you, Councilmember Rule.